Journal's regular session for August 20, 2019. Special session for September 12, 2019.
Move approval.
Okay, we have a move approval for the consent calendar. Would anyone like to second that approval?
Second.
All right. Roll call vote, please.
Councilman Cahoon.
Aye.
Councilman Morado.
Aye.
Councilwoman Souza.
Aye.
Council Vice President Rodrick.
Aye.
And Council President Britto.
Aye.
Next item, please.
Next item, licenses not requiring a public hearing for the vote. Application for special event alcoholic beverage. Sylvester Cardoso. Date of the event, September 15, 2019. This is a read-in.
Okay. Let me say read. So, this is for a move of passage at the consent. Does the council have anything?
Mr. President, so no other questions from all the council members, I move approval.
Okay. We have a move approval from Councilman Rodrick. Would anyone like to second that approval?
Second.
I have a second from Councilman Cahoon. Roll call vote, please.
Councilman Cahoon.
Aye.
Councilman Morado.
Aye.
Councilwoman Souza.
Aye.
Council Vice President Rodrick.
Aye.
And Council President Britto.
Aye.
Next item, please.
Application for officially licensed Jeffrey Stafford. Jeff's Wood Fired Pizza, 127 Waterman Avenue, 02914.
Is the applicant here this evening?
Here.
Would you like to step up to the podium, sir? In the event that we have any questions, you can answer them. Thank you. Want to just state your name for the record, please?
Jeffrey Stafford.
Okay. Do we have all the information that we need at this point in time on file?
Yes.
Okay. At the pleasure of the council, does anyone have any questions for the applicant at this time? No questions at this point in time. Would you like to state exactly what it is that you do?
So, we're opening up a small 25C wood-fired pizzeria on Waterman Ave., the Old Atlantic Fish Market. We're completely redoing it. The inside, it's going to be very nice. With the beer and wine license, we're opening, hopefully, mid-October, end of October. That's about it. I sound a little nervous.
That's all right. Very good. We'll move this right along for you then, sir.
Mr. President, I wish you good luck, and I move approval.
Second.
So, we have a motion on the floor for approval and second. Roll call vote, please.
Councilman Cahoon.
Aye.
Councilman Morado.
Aye.
Councilwoman Souza.
Aye.
Council Vice President Rodrick.
Aye.
And Council President Britto.
Aye.
Thank you, and congratulations, sir.
Thank you very much.
Next item, please.
Application for license to solicit William Francis for financial services and investment options.
Is the applicant or representative here this evening that would like to speak? Please step up to the podium. For the record, please state your name.
William Francis, financial advisor, Edward Jones Investments.
Okay. Want to just give us a little lowdown as to what exactly you do?
Yeah, of course. So, what we do is, we help people with their long-term goals when it comes to their financial services, of course, whether it be college planning, retirement planning, you name it. Pretty much, as a dollar sign, I can help with it. And we've been around for almost 100 years now, based out of St. Louis, Missouri, which is my hometown. And my office is open at 1275 Wompanoag in Riverside.
Okay.
And your ward, correct? Thanks for having me.
And what exactly are you looking for this evening?
All right. So, what I'd like to do is go around and introduce myself to my neighbors. There is a very large neighborhood, but Julianne Ling over on that side, where I'd be able to just go around, knock on doors, and introduce myself.
Okay. As your counsel.
Are you, it seems unusual that financial services going door-to-door. Are you just introducing yourself?
Yes, sir.
Are you offering sales of?
Not offering sales of any sort, sir, and I appreciate the question. So, for 98 years, Edward Jones has had their advisors knock on doors, which is, you know, from about 1950, it sounds like, I'm selling vacuums. But that's not the case. I'm not going around and selling stocks, you know, AT&amp;T or Verizon or anything like that. Going around, introducing myself. If someone has a need that I can help with, I'm happy to do so, but I'm not going to be selling stocks and bonds.
And how long was the period of time that you'll be doing this for?
So, renewal is not for another 12 months, if I remember correctly. So, every year, I'll be renewing my license. And since my branch is open here, I mean, we're looking for the next 20 years, so you can expect to see me at your doorstep for the next 20 years, guys.
What hours of the day are you appointed?
Great question. So, it'll be during the day. The latest I would ever be out is 7:00. I mean, especially at this time of year, where it gets dark very quickly. I want to respect people's, you know, their times at home, you know, dinner and whatnot. But primarily, for me, it's going to be in the mornings, so 9:00 to 12:00 type of area.
9:00 to 12:00?
Primarily. And what I'd like to do.
Only concern I have is, as we approach the winter months, it does get darker earlier, and people get a little wary of people soliciting.
Absolutely. So, never out past dusk, for sure.
Okay.
And the other thing that I'd like to do is also inform the police department, if I'm going to be parking in a neighborhood, let them know what streets I'm going to be on. I know, Ricardo, I can appreciate that, and I'm married, too, is I'd like to inform the police department if I'm driving to a neighborhood, let them know where I'm going to be in the time period, too.
My last question, Mr. President. Is it just you, or will you have others going door-to-door?
It's just myself, unless I am training someone. So, I am training an advisor who's in North Providence right now, doing the same exact thing. And so, if there's someone that I'm training, I'd be happy to have them along with me. But primarily, 99% of the time, it's just going to be me.
Mr. President, I'd move approval.
Okay. We have a motion to approve.
Just one more question.
Yes, sir.
So, do you intend to be a Bruins fan or a Blues fan?
I am from St. Louis. It is the, you know, the home of the 2019 Stanley Cup champions. And I'm a Blues fan, of course.
Wrong answer.
I'll take it. It's worth enough. All right.
We'll go ahead and allow it. I'll say.
So, we have a motion on the floor, and seconded by Councilman Cahoon. Roll call vote, please.
Councilman Cahoon.
Aye.
Councilman Morado.
Aye.
Councilwoman Souza.
Aye.
Council Vice President Rodrick.
Aye.
And Council President Britto.
Aye.
Thank you, sir, and good luck.
Thank you very much for your time. I appreciate it.
You're welcome. Next item, please.
Next item is public comment. The first person on public comment is Connie Maderas, speaking about house/wall.
Good evening. Can you state your name for the record, please?
Connie Maderas, 213 Waterman Ave.
Okay.
I have a comment. I approached Mrs. Souza about six months ago regarding to accident. I would say, I don't know what it was. It was an accident, was hit and run. It was. I have been involved in so many of that nature. I'm getting tired. The age is coming. And I don't know if I can keep the house clean, sparkling, bright for East Providence. If all East Providence residents keep their properties as well as I do, we will be in a museum. I pick up everything thrown on the ground, even bundles of meat and rocks and bricks, everything you mentioned. I don't leave for the city hall to pick it up or send their employees. I do my duties. But seems to me this board doesn't do. I called Mrs. Souza. She promised me to come to my house in a particular Saturday after my call. Up to this day, Mrs. Souza had no time. I did have time to vote for her. She did have time to stop at my door. But since then, I guess she ran out of juice. I wonder when and for all this meeting, this group, or anyone else besides the mayor showing interest in helping, but of course, it's limited because you people limit everything, what I should expect? Sell the house, leave the wall down, which I already built up, no insurance, so my pocket. That same spot was already hit seven times. I can prove, and you have records, public records. Have anybody interests in our well-being? Have anyone interest in the people from East Bay, who walks up there, residents from the nursing home, from the William Street Park down the street, John Street, protect the passing-bys? You take that much to put lights up there? Take that much to put bumpers up there? Take that much to put Jersey Banners to protect my property? What are you expecting for? Mrs. Souza told me she would get me some nonprofit people to help me. Where are they? All of us need to work for our bread and butter. And the people who are willing to do, maybe they have too many assignments, more than they can chew. So, what should I expect from all of you? Rest my case.
Ms. Maderas, so, we have spoken, and I apologize. Like I've told you before, I'm very sorry.
Because I called you in the next last meeting. You didn't even ignore me. You didn't know me.
I spoke to you. I know, I spoke to you outside during the meeting, correct. I apologize that I did not get to your home. We have spoken multiple times on the phone. I have expressed empathy for your situation of having somebody hit your property. Again, that is nobody on the council's fault that that has happened. We have addressed it multiple times here in a public forum, stating that we needed to get that curve, some proper signage, so people aren't coming around that corner so quickly and hopping that barrier and hitting your property. I did reach out to a nonprofit in the community and gave them photos of your home and your address to come by and speak with you. Whether they have or have not, I have not followed up with that, unfortunately, and they have not responded to me, whether they have spoken to you or not spoken to you. So, in that aspect, I do apologize, and I will reach out to them again.
Let me tell you, I'm sorry to interrupt you. All you have said, it's fine, but no solution. These remedies, you as they spoke with this one, and nonprofits, they are going, let's put together, the bricks together and the mortar.
Yeah.
How solve the problem? How you are willing to put your shoulders to solve the problem? You are giving me a Band-Aid. Don't give me many more Band-Aids. No more running around. This is ridiculous.
So, I don't have control, I don't have control, Mrs. Maderas, over that corner and that state road. I've spoken with the mayor's office multiple times. He has worked with the DPW, and I believe we've contacted R.I.D.O.T., which is the there to judge.
Are you sure? What is the proof? Show me. Show me fruits.
I wish I could. I wish I could, but I don't have that.
Too much talk, too much talk doesn't resolve the situation. Let's work together. Put your shoulder, put your mind, put your brain to it. You will get. Don't come to me for votes anymore, because my brain will work at that time, and I don't forget things.
Okay. I mean, I'm sorry that you feel this way.
I'm not thinking. I'm a grain of sand.
I'm sorry you feel this way.
I know the number of people to vote, but each sand goes in the scale, and there's a weight. I have said. Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't think you are resolving anything. You are just filling blanks. I'm sorry. Thank you.
Well, I apologize that you feel that way, but it's not just my responsibility. I'm one person in the city.
You shouldn't promise. You shouldn't promise to the house. You never said, stood there.
I told you I would come. Correct. I did tell you I would come by, but I am a full-time worker. Okay. Well, we'll agree to disagree, and I'm sorry that you feel that way.
Next item, please.
Next item is Catherine Crowley and Craig Ennis for budget for the school.
That's public comment?
Yes.
I don't know whether you want me to wait until the budget comes up and talk to it or talk now, but I signed up just in case I had to talk now. It's entirely up to you. I can wait.
This isn't a presentation, right?
No.
You just got a couple of.
I have a concern about the budget that the mayor's going to present regarding the school department. So, you might want to wait until you present.
Yeah, I think we should wait.
Yeah, that's no problem. Thank you.
Next item is council member communications, Harborview Housing Update. Council Vice President Rodrick.
Mr. President, I'll make this very quick. I know we'll have an important budget evening tonight. This is basically a very positive report. Councilman Morado and I were at Harborview Manor, the high-rise building in Riverside Square, and we had a neighborhood meeting which we had promised to attend. And everyone, I'll go right to the bottom line. Everyone left very satisfied. They had a lot of questions. For those who don't know quickly, they've lost all power in that building due to no one's fault. There was a wiring problem under the ground from 60-year-old electrical wire service through the building. And I would have to commend the mayor and the mayor's office on the late Friday, Labor Day weekend. We, as a council, started getting complaints. All five of us would communicate with each other on the phone, and residents were calling and complaining. And within less than a day, just about a day's time, the city contracted to remedy the problem by bringing in a 500,000-kilowatt generator, which powers that entire nine-story building. The generator was on its way to Florida for the storms, but it got diverted here to East Providence for us to use. Of course, there was some confusion. Some of the residents wanted to know, when is the power going to come back? What about lost food in our refrigerator? Things like that. So, the councilman and myself went there last night. Also, in attendance was representative from the East Providence Housing Authority, attorney from the housing authority, and the maintenance supervisor from the generator company. So, they answered all the questions. They basically said they'll be back online, hopefully by the end of this week. Could be a couple of days more. And we cleared up some issues about communication, getting word to the residents quicker. And you know how those meetings go. It ended up back and forth, but being positive with the residents, actually applauding at one point and thanking the city for reacting quickly. Councilman Morado, if you want to add anything to that, that's all I would have to say at this point.
I think you did a good job. I'll leave it at that.
Okay. So, with that, just for information, for those Harborview residents who may be here or if you know anyone there, it should be resolved soon and resolved permanently. We talked about elevators, other issues they're having. And again, thanks to the mayor's office for reacting very quickly on late Friday of Labor Day weekend to get this matter resolved. And councilman and myself and all of us have been asking questions, so we'll keep on top of it. Thank you.
Thank you, councilman. Next item, please.
Next item is community meeting, War Two, Rockaway to State Street. Councilwoman Souza.
So, I just wanted to make a public announcement to the community at State Street neighborhood from Rockaway all the way down to Marsh Abbott State Street. We will be having that community meeting that I have mentioned a couple of times over the course of the last month at Lucky's this Saturday at 4:00 to discuss further ideas and remediations that the area needs to help with their flooding. As we know, the COVID project has been finished, but I think that there is more that needs to be done. The community feels that there is more also that needs to be done in that neighborhood. It's a multifaceted project that's going to take a team, including the city, but the state and D E M and other agencies. The mayor is also in attendance at that meeting, and I have also invited our at-large Vice Council President Rodrick to attend the meeting. So, I encourage you all to come out, those in the neighborhood who have ideas, thoughts. We know your concerns and any questions that you can bring forward. Again, it's at 4:00 Lucky's in East Providence, Warren Ave. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Mr. Council President, I'd just like to say, thank you for taking that on. Councilwoman Souza, I know a gentleman from Lucky's was here a couple of meetings ago, trying to get some help with that situation. I would say that, you know, your response to this is a hallmark of your responsiveness to everybody, and you've certainly been responsive to me and anyone I've ever talked to. So, you know, thanks for doing this. I'm hoping I can come over there and catch up with you guys.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you, Councilwoman. So, before we proceed over into next, into the ordinances, what I want to ask is, because I had asked the superintendent during public comment, she wanted to make a comment regarding the mayor's budget. However, there is no public comment at that point in time. So, I'd ask, whatever you'd like to say, you can come up during public comment, and then we're going to go right over to the, move right over to the reports of other city officials. Yes?
Late this afternoon, it came to my attention that the school department's budget is being cut by $950,000. The school department asked for $2,391,303. 1.3 of that is for salaries, and 700,000 of that is for benefits, for a total of $2.0 million, leaving the school department with approximately $391,303 to use for its regular budget. Since the budget was presented to the school committee and we notified the school committee last week, we've had several high-cost special education students coming in from D C Y F Placement. Their placement is out of district. We have to continue those I E Ps out of district to a cost of almost $600,000. So, before I even have a budget, I am in the hole $208,697. I think that we presented a very good budget this year. You can see that most of it is salaries and benefits. We had very little that we were working with in the general budget. So, I think that it is a fair and equitable budget. We have continued to do what we promised to do to the citizens of East Providence, which is keep up our facilities, so we're never at the point where we become another Providence. And with this already starting at a deficit, I have some real concerns about what we will be able to continue to do. And under my supervision, I will not allow this school department to become another Providence. We are on a positive path, both academically as well as with the physical structures in this city. And I am very concerned about that $950,000 cut. That $950,000, which was under, I believe, our construction line item, Mr. Enos, was for foyers for health and safety. One foyer at White Neck Elementary School and one foyer at Riverside Middle School. When I say a foyer, it's because when you enter those schools, you're right in the building. So, we are building foyers out for safety of our students, so that when someone enters, they can be kept in that section of the building until they are cleared to enter the building. And if you've ever been in White Neck, you know that. If you've ever been in Riverside Middle School, that's a huge foyer that opens up into the entire building. We are also putting new windows at Riverside Middle School. They're in bad shape. They're in bad need of new windows. And we just found out a couple of weeks ago, we had all of the boilers in all of the schools examined, and Kent Heights will need a new boiler this year. So, those are things that I will not be able to do as a result of this $950,000 cut. So, I'm asking you to consider placing that back into the school department budget. Thank you.
Mr. President, may I ask one question?
Sure.
Craig, if you recall, when you presented the budget to us a few weeks ago, I asked a question about the city's allocation with regard or with respect to the overall salaries for the department employees. And I think I indicated that, per your budget, this would be the first time, maybe in history, certainly the first time that I can remember, that the city's allocation would actually cover just the salaries of the people working for the school department. Not utilities, not books, not maintenance, not any of that, just the salaries.
Just the salaries.
So, presumably, a reduction of $950,000 would mean that the city of East Providence would not be covering even the salaries of the employees of the school department.
Correct.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Madam clerk, next item.
Next item is under ordinances, public hearing for second.
So, at the pleasure of the council, before we get into ordinances, can we move up the presentations that we have for the reports of other city officials, and then we can jump right into our resolutions and ordinances at that point in time?
No objection.
Unless someone has an objection to that, this way, we can get our presentations out with our belt, and we can proceed with the ordinances and resolutions after that. So, with that being said, reports of other city officials. We have the mayor communications and the mayor budget address for 2019, 2020 city of East Providence budget, presented by Mayor Roberto El De Silva.
Thank you, members of the council and members of the public who are here today, department heads, members of the finance team, who we've spent weeks and weeks and weeks preparing this and planning for this budget. It is my privilege to present to the council and the people of East Providence the 2020 fiscal year budget. This budget represents our priorities and vision for the community. This budget has been crafted with much care over the past few months, taking input from department and division heads, the school department, and members of the community. My goal as mayor of this fine city is to make East Providence the first place you choose to live, work, educate, and raise your family. As you read through the budget, you will see where our priorities lie. And for me, it's working to make East Providence number one. Elected officials must take great care in deciding how to spend your tax dollars. It's important that we provide great city services and investment in our infrastructure through capital improvements, while also weighing the community's ability to pay for those services. Taxpayers should know how their tax dollars are spent. For the first time ever, under my administration, we will be introducing our budget on the Open Gov online platform, which we're putting up on the projectors now. This will allow the community to gain access to our up-to-date budget and spending practices. I believe in keeping our community well-informed of how things are being done in our government, and Open Gov is just one of the steps we are taking to create a greater transparency. We are making full use of public feedback meetings, robust communication utilizing social media platforms, traditional media, code red alerts, all in an effort to keep our residents informed. When I reenforce, I promise the residents of the city tax relief. This budget increases the homestead exemption by 0.5%, bringing it up to 13.5%. My goal is to bring the homestead exemption back to the 15% level that it was at before it was lowered by the Budget Commission. In time, we can achieve this goal through incremental increases of the homestead exemption. As the city embarks on building a state-of-the-art high school, we need to plan accordingly, as many of you do when you borrow, to build a home or to buy a home or purchase a vehicle, and you devise a plan to pay back that loan. We need to do exactly that in order to pay for the bills that will come due on this modern high school that we're building. This is why I propose that we raise enough funds in this budget to set aside $1.4 million in a restricted debt service account, so we can lessen the burden on future generations and prepare to make those payments on the school. Our fiscal year 2020 proposed budget was conservatively prepared. Our fiscal year 2020 proposed budget was conservatively prepared, and it may not, and it not only meets the inherited financial challenges that our administration took on and was confronted with, but more importantly, it provides East Providence with a solid financial platform to move forward and seize the many future opportunities that will make our city the preeminent place in Rhode Island to live, work, and operate a business. The 2020 proposed budget calls for general fund expenditures, including schools, of approximately $165.8 million. That's a 4.8 million dollar or 3% increase over the prior year. City expenditures will increase by nearly 2.7 million, which is 3.6% in the proposed budget. However, 1.4 million of that increase on the city side is, represents the amount of money that we'll be putting aside into a special debt services fund to pay the school bond that will come due. Without this reserve, city expenditures are proposed to increase by approximately 1.3 million or 1.7%. So taking out that 1.4 million that we want to put aside to pay for the schools, our increase is 1.7% overall. School department expenditures are proposed to increase by 2.1 million. That's a 2.5% increase. We give the city contributing 1.4 million of that increase. The administration inherited substantial expenditures increases from actions of prior city administrations. We had to incur those, and in the proposed budget, we tried to deal with those. Our police and fire annual required pension contribution went up by combined $720,000. That's 9.6%, mainly due to my administration's choice to adopt a more actuarially conservative mortality table than what we previously had. We could have stayed with the older, more actuarially unsound mortality table that was used in previous years, but we chose to do the right thing. My position is, I want to do what's right for us now and for the future. And by adopting this actuarial table, that takes the risk of future generations and eases the burden so as not to unfairly burden them with public safety pension costs. A previously negotiated 2% salary increase, as well as step increases across all of our previously negotiated municipal employee contracts, added approximately $700,000 to our 2020 expenditure total. Our debt service for fiscal year 2020, not including, not including the 1.4 million that I want to put aside to pay for the new high school debt, increased by 503, because, $503,000, because we will now only begin to make payments on the 2017 tax incremental financing bond for Kettle Point. In addition, we will now begin making payments on a 2017 bond that the previous city administrations had used to make city buildings more energy efficient. Both of these previously issued bonds were beneficial to our city, but we have not had to feel the projected cost impact until now, until this budget. So we have to budget for that right now. The most substantial expenditure increase in our proposed fiscal 2020 budget is for the East Providence School Department. The school department presented us with a budget that calls for a year-over-year expenditure increase of $3.1 million, which is 3.6%, with the city picking up nearly 2.4 million of that escalation, and with increases in state, federal, and other funding sources paying for the rest. Contractual salary increases, higher benefit costs, and $950,000 that was told to us that is for school construction and repair. This is a new and very costly line in their budget. And if this gets included in the budget, next year, it will have to be included in the budget also by state law. That increase made up the majority of the school department's present 2020 budget expenditure growth. What I found out recently is that the city's been holding an escrow about $6.5 million in school funds. These funds represent windfalls from accumulated prior surpluses generated by the school department and will be earmarked for future school capital improvements. The school department will have access to that $6.5 million to fix their foyers, to make improvements, to buy a new boiler. They have that money sitting. We're holding it. As all of you know, and I don't have to educate some of the people in this room, but every year, because we run on a different fiscal year budget, we have to borrow to keep cash flow. And it costs us money when we borrow. We have to pay interest on that money. That 6.5 helps us to avert borrowing an extra $6.5 million. These funds represent, like I said, and this, and they present the 2020 budget to us, the school department requested $950,000 for capital improvements. This would, this would have been in addition to the 6.5 million that we have already accumulated. I do not believe that this additional nearly $1 million for school capital improvement is prudent at this time, given the tremendous future debt that the city taxpayers will incur for this new high school. To ask our taxpayers to pay another $950,000 for school capital in addition to the already accumulated 6.5 million is just too much. Therefore, I will not be including $950,000 in the school department's budget, but instead will be allocating $950,000 into a restricted debt service account in the city's budget to be used exclusively for future debt payments on the new high school. The removal of the $950,000 from the additional 2.4 million in city funding that was requested by the school department brings the proposed 2020 city budget contribution to the school to be an additional 1.4 million. So we will be contributing an additional 1.4 million to the school department over last year's budget. There are fixed costs to city government, such as contractual and pension obligations, existing debt, personnel, and fixed operating costs that must be funded. We, we came into this administration with those costs set, something we have to pay for. These inherited expenditures increases were considerable and deeply influenced how we prepared the fiscal 2020 budget. While our goal was to cut and/or maintain departmental expenditures wherever possible, we also want to position ourselves for economic expansion and an increased tax base. We want to continue to improve our infrastructure and maintain high levels of public safety. For instance, we cut positions in our tax collector's office, our assessor's office, and in the senior services department, and rejected requests for new and full and part-time positions across other departments. On the other hand, we budgeted to fully staff our depleted police and fire departments with new recruits. This necessary addition to our public safety departments will help to not only reduce the department's overtime costs, but will also enhance fire and police ability to better protect and serve our community. Recently, the city council approved an ordinance change that will allow us to restructure our planning department so that the department can generate a greater focus on economic development and the marketing of our city. The newly renamed planning and economic development department will now include an economic development and a planning division. The economic development division will include a marketing data specialist. That's a new position. And the planning divisions will have a primary planner, which was unfunded from the 2019 budget. By aligning our planning and development efforts with a marketing strategy, we will bolster new business growth, increase the city's tax base, and add good-paying jobs. Finally, in the 20, in the fiscal 2020 budget, we are proposing to make our part-time minimum housing officer a full-time position. Our city residents should not have to experience blighted and neglected properties. We aim to put a greater emphasis on minimum housing enforcement and neighborhood revitalization. That's something that we're going to focus on. In the way of capital improvements, our proposed 2020 budget calls for a significant $3.7 million investment in capital. We carefully evaluated capital requests from all of our departments and selected to fund in fiscal 2020 those items and projects that are of greatest need and most beneficial to our community. To help decrease capital costs, however, we challenge our department heads to come up with less costly ways to meet their capital needs. So what we've been able to do with the fire department, and you'll be considering this resolution later today, we asked them, let's purchase, let's see if we can purchase new emergency vehicles, but at the same time, we'll be acquiring some high-quality, pre-owned ladder and engine trucks to meet the immediate needs of this community. We will also aggressively seek out grants to supplement capital programs throughout our department. And our newly restructured planning and economic development office will be the driving force behind finding more grant money. While we have detailed many of the financial challenges presented to us in this fiscal 2020 budget, the most obvious challenge is the future financing of our new $189.5 million high school. We have been meeting regularly with representatives from all disciplines involved with the complex, expensive, much-needed, and exciting project, including those involved with design, construction, and bond financing. There are still numerous major unknowns involved with the new high school construction, including the final amount of reimbursement and the timing of the reimbursement of state aid. We have always known that building this high school would require an overall tax increase. There are many aspects of our bond financing still to be developed, and we are working hard with our finance department and advisors to lower our projected interest rates wherever we can save money on this project. I'm nickel-and-diming every opportunity I can to save the taxpayers' money. When finalized, we will present to the public a comprehensive financing plan for the new high school. To fund our proposed 2020 budget, we are requesting a tax rate that is 2.6% higher than it was last year. While any tax increase represents an additional financial burden for our taxpayers, we believe that a 2.6% rate increase is reasonable, given the fiscal challenges we have addressed in this proposed budget, especially those involved with funding our schools. What will this mean for the average homeowner? It means approximately $104 to the average taxpayer's bill. Our city is on the rise, and my administration is very proud of the improvements in economic development, infrastructure, community programs, and arts and entertainment throughout East Providence. A combination of all these elements presents growth and job opportunities. Our community right now is bustling with economic development, from breaking ground on the new high school to working with Live Nation Entertainment on securing a new amphitheater to house the city's waterfront concert series. The 45-acre mixed-use development site sat unoccupied and mostly unused for nearly 40 years. That will soon change. With Rhode Island Waterfront Enterprises, the new landowner, has planned a mixed-use model to not only connect East Providence residents to the waterfront, but to serve the port needs of the offshore wind industry. As we have witnessed with the Bull Point concerts, live music helps to attract tourists and contributes to the city's cultural environment. The waterfront district represents one of the most exciting growth opportunities. The industrial-aged waterfront is slowly transforming into a mixed-use district with open space, residential, and business opportunities. It is my goal to see our waterfront district flourish. In addition to Live Nation, our state and federal delegation has committed $54 million to build a new Henderson Bridge, which will provide greater access to the waterfront and open additional land for development. In addition, my administration has been working with the governor and Rhode Island Department of Transportation to build an off-ramp from Interstate 195 westbound directly to Waterfront Drive. Investment in our community and support for small business is key to our city's continued economic growth. That's why we have formed a partnership with the Small Business Development Center, which is now has a satellite office here in East Providence at this, at our city hall, to provide private, no-cost counseling to prospective entrepreneurs and existing business owners. Investors are interested in what we have to offer in East Providence. The Odd Fellows Home, which had sat vacant for decades, has been an eyesore and drain on our resources, but in a short period of time, our, my administration has been able to mobilize and sell this key historic building in our growing Watchamook Arts District. The revitalization of this historic property at the gateway of our waterfront in our Arts District would be a key piece to our growth and community development. Speaking of historic gems, the Luff Carousel at Crescent Park has undergone significant improvements in recent years. We pride ourselves on being able to keep the carousel operating and available to our residents and visitors. However, decades of use of a very old and historic building does come with needed maintenance and repairs to the building's infrastructure. This budget provides for the much-needed improvements to our carousel. The carousel attracts tourists and brings vitality to Riverside, but there's more we can do to make this a year-round destination spot. Creating a new and expanded concession building would provide year-round revenue that will support the continued preservation of the carousel. To build on the idea of year-round recreation, $100,000 in capital improvement is recommended for the acquisition and installation of an ice skating rink, which was part of the landscape design plan approved by the city council and the Rhode Island Historic Preservation and Heritage Commission. The city's Department of Public Works has been, has had a very busy year. The city has implemented the first phase of a three-year, $10 million roadway improvement plan. Our paving contractor has been milling and paving our city's roads, and once Phase 1 is complete, residents will see improvements on approximately 40 roads. The DPW, in addition to having those 40 roads, was able to work out a special deal with National Grid to pave a significant portion of Riverside that originally was not scheduled to be paved. We are requesting additional funding for installation of pedestrian signals to improve public safety and promote walking and cycling. Improvements need to expand beyond the roadways and into our city parks. The Kevin Robinson Memorial Skate Park at the owner-remise park is a popular destination, and the addition of a second skate park in the city would benefit and create greater access for the youth throughout our community. Recently, the K. Robb Foundation donated to the city professional-grade skate ramps, which used to be used by K. Robb himself. And we plan to use these to create a second skate park in our city. Renovations at the Pierce Field Complex are in great need. Our city's youth and other organizations utilize these parks and fields on a daily basis, and the frequent replacement of basketball courts, fencing, and lighting will result in safety issues for the public. The city has begun renovations to improve American with Disabilities Act accessibility issues at Pierce Stadium by installing and widening new and existing sidewalks. As this important work continues, we are looking to the future. We want to build a new pavilion with gazebo on site so our youth and our creative community can utilize it for ceremonies, performances, and summer programs. Music in the park and theater in the park will become a cherished community event for all to enjoy at Pierce. The city is going to make improvements and expand upon basketball courts at Pierce. Throughout the year, the two existing basketball courts get great use, and they are in very poor condition. Our goal is to improve the existing two basketball courts and add two new basketball courts in addition to the existing ones. Part of my vision of the city is to create an arts and entertainment district, similar to how other communities have, that will have a tax benefit to those people that come in and operate business, create art in that district. It has been proven that there is a direct correlation between the arts and economic development and having an arts district will benefit our creative community, local economy, and social well-being. It's a win for all. Included in this budget is a $50,000 funding request to create a city-funded grant program to promote public arts. Public arts programs spur economic development, invigorate public spaces, and make art free for everyone to enjoy. We have already accomplished much under our administration, but there's still a lot of work to be done, and I'm excited about what's to come. My vision has always been to continue to attract people to the city of East Providence who will want to live, work, and raise their families here. This budget delivers our community a plan to pay for an amazing new high school and other city school improvements, create access to the waterfront, an open business mentality, investment in our parks, and continued support of our city's services and people. I see a great future for the city, and this budget will help us get there. It's an honor serving as your first mayor, and I will continue to work hard on your behalf. That's my speech. And with that...
Thank you, man.
I'd like to point out that we have posted on our social media platforms, and we will post on our website the link so that anybody in the community can get into our proposed budget, and you can drill down pretty deep. You can get down to very specific numbers. It's all there for everyone to see. It's there for the council to look at. We've also printed out some old-fashioned paper copies, if you need. If anybody needs any, were you going to show some people an example or no? I mean, it's very simple to go, to go through, but if, if you need additional information, we're willing to sit down and conduct a workshop and show people how to use this to get all the information they need. But as you go through the budget, and as you click on that pie chart, for instance, it breaks it down. You can, you can break this down into not only bar graphs and pie charts, but you can also break it down into the old-fashioned Excel spreadsheets, if you like. But anyways, it's very interactive, and we hope that you will get to see exactly where your tax dollars are being utilized and how your money is being spent. We're very proud that we were able to kick this off with this new OpenGov platform. Any question? No, no question.
So you know, this, this is not a public comment. We will have time for people to come up and speak on whether you're for or against it at a later date, but I'll just read a statement here that pursuant to Section 5-11 of the city charter. Now that we have heard the mayor's budget address and received the proposed budget, we are now required to set the date for the first public hearing on it. That first public hearing has to be advertised and must not be less than seven days from the date of the published notice. So depending upon the advertised deadline, we need to set a date tonight and then schedule another meeting as needed. So just want to keep that in mind, that we should, in order to go forward with this, we need to, this evening, schedule budget hearings, and there will be a point in time when we have a public hearing for people to express their views.
Mr. President, our finance director also had, as part of this presentation, had to... to inform the council some information that he needed to present.
Okay.
Council President.
You want to just pass that right down?
Pass it. This is very similar, or reiterates what you said, what I've done, and what I've done historically for you, for those of you that have been on the council. I put together like a budget calendar, and as they pass it out, you'll see the first page shows September and October, important dates, possible workshops. The second page lists all the state laws and charter ordinance or charter sections pertinent to the budget. So you'll see the first one, I've got it, most of these are in red. Today is the last day to submit the budget per Section 5.3. What we have done historically is have council meetings, at council meetings, we have budget hearings, and that is usually a half an hour to an hour, but you'll have workshops where you can get into the weeds and ask very specific questions, and that way you can formulate it, so when you come back to the public hearing, you have some information. But again, this is all at your discretion. We, we've currently scheduled an ad to run on Thursday, depending on when you schedule the first public hearing. In here, we've got it scheduled for the next council meeting, which is October 1st. And so I guess I'll go through this. You can have workshops, you can have workshop anytime you want, you just need 48 hours' notice. Per the charter, you have to have seven days. Per the state law, it has to have 10. So if we advertise on the 19th, 10 days really almost brings you to October 1st, which would be the next council meeting. If you look on October 25th, that's the last day to adopt the budget. Per the charter, it's got to be within seven days prior to the year-end. And again, if you look at the second page, it tells you specifically, and that's just more of a copy and paste of all of the, the laws and charter sections.
So at the pleasure of the council, if these dates fit your schedule, you know, we can vote on it now and get it over with. If it doesn't, and then we can talk about it either now or have a discussion on it later.
And the rest of them can be anytime you want to. Really, the critical one is the first public hearing. And, you know, after that, we can schedule, we could schedule them now or later. I just want to make sure that really the first one we really need to get taken care of is that, that first public hearing.
So, Mr. President, I think that represents a reasonable schedule to go forward, and I think it gives us enough time and enough meetings to talk about the things that we need to talk about. That's just my perspective.
Okay.
We can always add if we need more correct on the road, on the week or so.
With 48 hours notice.
Yeah. Councilwoman, does that fit your schedule?
It does.
It does.
Councilman Roberts?
It does.
Okay, works for me, so...
No vote. He just, I prefer not to have a vote because it was...
I'm not having a vote.
Thank you.
I'm saying, let the record state that the point of information that we have on the calendar that was presented by the finance director that will proceed tomorrow to schedule these dates going forward.
Can I just make just one request?
So the city clerk has enough time to get her, to advertise it, yes?
Will it be possible to change the October 9th to October 10th?
It's October 10th, Thursday. If it's provided that, it will work for me, let me see, October 10.
I'm okay as long as we start seven or after.
Yeah, it would be seven after. Councilwoman, does that work for you?
Um, tentatively, now it does, yes.
Okay.
Well, it's okay with me.
All right. So we'll say tentatively at 7:00. As opposed to October 9th, we'll move that October 9th date to October 10, tentatively at 7:00 PM.
Mr. President, may I read these dates here for the record, so the public can hear them?
Yes.
So it looks like what we've got scheduled right now would be a workshop on Wednesday, the 25th of September, a council meeting, which would be a budget hearing, an open meeting on Tuesday, the 1st of October, a workshop on Wednesday, the 2nd of October, a workshop on Thursday, the 10th of October, a council meeting on Tuesday, the 15th of October. That again would be a budget hearing, so that would be open for public comment. This has marked currently the last day for changes, although I imagine, is there a reason that that's marked last day for changes?
Yes, because if you make changes and increase any line item, you have to publish it again. So if you publish it, you, you have to have five days before the next hearing. Now, the paper we put it in is out on Thursday, so if, you know, if you, you could maybe move it a day or two if you went to the Journal, depending on what their requirements are.
So why isn't the last day to adopt the budget, the 31st of October? I'm not suggesting that's a recipe for success, I'm just asking the question.
If you look at 5, 12, 3, it says the budget shall be finally adopted no later than seven days before the end of the current fiscal year.
Got it. All right, thank you, Malcolm.
You're welcome.
So with respect to the ad, because of these dates are tentative, why don't we go with the first two weeks, say? Is that good for everyone? Without advertising the last week, and then we can kind of hold off, or does it matter what? Madam Clerk, does it matter what?
The only thing that I would point out is on October 14th, that's a holiday, so everything's going to be, need to be sped up before then if we're going to advertise anything.
In the Post.
In the Post, not the Journal, yep.
Okay. So we'll, we'll go with the advertising for the September 19th, and then we'll do the following week as well, cover those two weeks.
Yeah, and Malcolm and I will be together to put the ad in tonight.
Right.
In an event that a council person has to change, or something comes up in the council...
The workshop, I don't think, has to be in the paper, that's just 48 hours posted.
Okay. It's just the budget hearings?
Right, the budget hearing, the one on 10, one, we've got, we'll put that in the paper on Thursday.
Oh, well, the budget hearing's on the, on the scheduled meeting, so, yeah, you can proceed with that, I guess. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Moore. Anything else you'd like to add while you're up there?
No.
Okay.
Thank you.
President, question on procedural logistics, are we not to ask any questions tonight? Or are we, are we just setting the schedule and not, not asking budget questions, or council, is that...
We're not proceeding with the budget questions at this point in time, if I'm not mistaken, we can't. We're just proceeding with the dates to go forward with the hearings and the budget workshops.
In terms of preparation, if we had something that, I don't want to ask a question at our first budget workshop and have someone say, "Well, I didn't know that question was going to be asked, I'm not prepared." Am I able to request? For instance, I want to just make sure that, of a question about the $6 million or $6.5 million that we've all recently found out was around for the past few years, something that everyone here has inherited, not a, not a problem from the mayor, not a problem from his council, but the auditor discovered that. So for instance, I'd like at least some more information about that. How, what's the history of it? How did it build up? I'd like maybe a Paul Luber, as of state financial officer who's here, to possibly be available, if he can, to give us a little history on that, and so we, we can speak, speak about it in a more educated manner.
I mean, can we go into that this evening, or do we want to go into that this evening? I don't think so. I think what would be best at this point in time, that we proceed in the manner that is presented in front of us, and that is that during the budget hearings, we will have this for discussion at that point in time, and that way it's free. Public can ask some questions, is it, it's a public...
Public hearing, yes.
Public hearing, so the public can ask some questions, but right now, I just want to stick to what we have as far as the schedule is concerned, so we can proceed to move this meeting along.
Council President, just let me just add, for the purpose of the public hearing that needs to be posted, this council cannot make any changes by the charter until the public hearing is held. So the workshops that you're having before the public hearing, that's just to call the department heads in, to give, get information, why did you fund this, blah, 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 but you can't make any changes to the budget until after the first public hearing is held.
But I think right now, I think the complement is referencing just having questions that need to be answered.
Great.
Mr. President, if there's anything at all that anybody on the council is looking to get information on, absolutely get in touch with us, we'll get that for you.
Okay.
We'll do our, you know, diligence to get that to you as quick as possible.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. All right, just so we can move this meeting along, there's still reports of other city officials. Madam Clerk, I'm going to ask, right now, we have economic development update from Jim Moran of Planning Department coming up next. With that being said, Jim, you're going to be sponsoring, or not so much sponsoring, I'm sponsoring the...
Watchamoke.
Uh, the, I'm sorry, let me just grab this right here. Okay. Watchamoke, Talka Waterfront Gateway Project as well. If the council doesn't mind while Jim's here, if he, if we could just move that ordinance up to kill two birds with one stone, and we can get, get him out of here after that as well. Mr. Moran, is that okay with the council?
Yep.
Okay.
Good. I'm sorry, can we say that again? We are moving what?
So the, the ordinance regarding, let me see, where am I? It's a resolution.
Watchamoke.
Watchamoke. It's a resolution to support of funding the Watchamoke Waterfront Gateway Project. So he's here to pretty much essentially talk about that as well. So while he's up here...
Want to do that at the same?
Yeah, that's item C, I believe, letter C.
Yes, letter C. I'm going to move that right up. Mr. Moran?
Thank you, members of the council. I'm pleased to be here this evening to present a, an economic development update for the 2019 year. Just to back up a little bit, last week, I had the opportunity, along with Mayor De Silva and Acting Planning Director Diane Feather, to present an economic development to the, update to the Chamber of Commerce at their business steering hours last Thursday. And we had a very successful presentation of some of the things that are going on in the city right now that have been very positive, very exciting times for economic development, certainly in the city of East Providence. And so the mayor asked if I could, you know, present this to you this evening, give you a little bit of update on some of the highlights of the things that are happening. I know in the mayor's budget message, he mentioned several items that are presented within this presentation as well. And again, if any questions come up as I move through this presentation, feel free to ask them as we move forward. Can I get this into a presentation mode? Is it possible? On the PowerPoint? I could do it this way, but it's... Is this a PowerPoint, or is this a PDF? This is in a PDF format, so the image is going to be a little bit smaller, so some of the images might be a bit smaller than I had hoped, but I can explain these and give you an overview of the situation as to the, what's on each slide. As the mayor had indicated, the Henderson Bridge has been an important link between the east side of Providence and Providence, and recently was announced by the Rhode Island Department of Transportation that $54 million was available for reconstruction of the Henderson Bridge, and they have been working, Rideout's been working very diligently to prepare this design that you can see at the top of the, the top photo in this image. The interesting aspect of this is that they are proposing to have a narrowing of the Henderson Bridge, the development of a 14-foot-wide pedestrian bike crossing, and then also a pair of dual roundabouts that will provide better connections to Mass Suede Avenue, Waterfront Drive, and obviously the entire length of the waterfront. So a very exciting development, looking forward to Rideout probably having final design sometime this fall. We've been meeting with them regularly, the city, and we're looking very much forward to seeing the final design put together. The bottom image basically shows all of the parcels that could potentially be important economic development parcels, and again, the image is somewhat small, but I think you can see that there are a number of parcels, A through K, that are all significant in size, and each of these parcels could present particularly beneficial development possibilities with, you know, tax revenue and jobs being created as a result of the redevelopment of some of these important parcels. So it's a very important project. Moving on to the next slide, another piece of this that was also mentioned by the mayor, that's a very important part of the connection, is between the Washington Bridge and Henderson Bridge. And as mentioned, there is a proposal to put a westbound exit ramp that would come off of 195 and connect with Waterfront Drive, and then you'd have immediate connections to Waterfront, where you could head down to Bull Point or head north up to Henderson Bridge much more efficiently. The DOT is, has applied for a $25 million build grant to fund a portion of this project. If that build grant is obtained, and we're hoping Rideout will hear about this sometime in October or November, we will see potentially a design that could see that westbound ramp providing that important connection. The other thing that would happen as a result of this work would be they would eliminate the Gano Street off-ramp, which would help to improve traffic pattern movement through 195. If anybody's familiar with 195, you know how sometimes in the morning, the traffic can be quite backed up, so they would add an additional lane, the weaving pattern would disappear, and you'd be able to see improved traffic movement through that area. So if this all comes to fruition, we'll be very pleased to see these improvements in the connections down Henderson Bridge. The Unical Development. This project is actually tied in very closely with a number of projects that are located along the waterfront. The Waterfront Commission have, as you've seen, been working very closely with the owner of this property. Unical is going to be seeking $9.37 million in tax increment financing in an agreement for public improvements associated with the Bull Point development at Unical, and just maybe hard to read in the audience, but it references 110 rental apartment units, 43,500 square feet of restaurant as part of a waterfront public plaza, 150 hotel rooms, a waterfront terrace and garden, 375 space, two-story subterranean structured parking garage, and a 400-seat public waterfront amphitheater. And at the present time, you can kind of see the image below, kind of shows a representation of what might be developed on that site based on what was in their TIF report that they submitted to the Waterfront Commission. This will be heard by the Waterfront Commission at its September 19th meeting, and then a decision on this TIF will be coming to the city council in November, sometime in October. So the date hasn't been exactly set, but would be happening in October.
Mr. Moran, may I ask a quick question?
Yes.
Would it be possible, those of us, I can't be at the Waterfront Commission meeting on Thursday evening, would it be possible for us to get a copy after that meeting, based on what the Waterfront Commission decides to do of specifically that TIF report following that meeting? I mean, if they decide to reject it, it's, it's not necessary, but if they go for...
Yeah, that report can be made available. I can talk to Pamela Sherrill, the executive director, and make sure that that report can be made available to the, to the council.
Thank you, that's tough reading. I'd like to start that earlier rather than later.
Sure, no, no problem. Again, mentioned in the mayor's budget report, the Chevron, I guess we can see it. There we go. Try to center it so you can kind of, whoop. All right. Not moving. It's moving really. This is kind of... Sorry, I'm, I'm used to presenting this in a PowerPoint format and not a PDF format, so it's advancing in a way that doesn't seem to be... Is that moving? I'm actually trying to get it so it's centered on the slide that I'm trying to show. There we go. The Chevron site obviously has a number of things happening right now. You can see there are pictures right now of the Chevron site in the photo, the South Key. There's an image taken from the www.eastprovidence.com. Key. There's an image taken from the www.eastprovidenceharborfront.com page that shows the kind of development that could potentially be proposed on that site. They're in the process, Chevron, of transforming that site that you see on the upper-left picture into a mixed-use development and looking to create a rebuilding process that would have commercial development and residential development. The Menet comic golf club, which is shown in the upper-right, has recently been acquired by the Menet Comet Property Company, and they have plans to develop residential apartments and condominiums as part of that development and improvements to the private golf course as well. Okay. Then the South Key is another important piece. They're looking to obviously create the amphitheater that was discussed in the presentation by the mayor, the budget presentation, and also a potential lay-down area for wind improvements on that site as well. So that's very exciting. And then if anybody were interested, you could all see the vision that Chevron has, again, at their website, eastprovidenceharborfront.com. Kettle Point, obviously, most people by now are familiar with major developments that are occurring at Kettle Point. They're developing, they've developed their 90,000-square-foot office building, very successful. Long Rock Cove is continuing with the construction of their phased 62 condominium units. And it's expected that, you know, those will be completed over the next year to year and a half. AR Building Company is nearing completion of their apartment building with 228 units, and that includes a car, a clubhouse and car bonds providing sheltered parking. And the fish pier, which is kind of shown in the image in the upper-left, will be accessible to the public and under public ownership by the city. So that's very exciting, that people using the bike path will be able to access that pier and get some great views, and also probably be able to fish, too. Here's another important project mentioned in the budget presentation, East Providence High School. Not going into a lot of details, because I think there's been some discussion on this already, but the projected completion is 2021, $189.5 million. I think, you know, when you look at the things that are being proposed, 45 core classrooms, 10 science labs, major improvements, obviously, from what's in the existing high school. One of the things that's very important about a new high school and an improved infrastructure is that it promotes economic development. It's one of the major, I think, themes of promoting economic development, is that an excellent education system promotes an excellent economic development opportunity in the community. Oddfellows Hall, this property has recently been sold. The company that is going to be, that has acquired it will be coming in, and they will be developing retail in the lower levels, office uses in the upper level. Very exciting that we've, you know, looked to preserve this building for many years. There was concern that this property was going to be lost to the demolition, but also we're very happy that this property is going to be preserved and that it's going to become a major part of the Watchamoke Square redevelopment efforts, the Arts and Entertainment District, all the things that are going on, the great things that are going on down in the waterfront.
Director, is there a timetable for that? It's exciting, and I'm hoping, I'm wondering what...
I don't have an exact timeframe for when they're going to be proceeding, but I think they're going to be moving in earnest on that. It'll be happening fairly soon. Their schedule's pretty aggressive. Yeah, so I think they'd be getting started right away. The agreements have been signed, and obviously, they've indicated that they want to move quickly on the project. But I think, you know, within a year, you'll probably see a lot of things happening that'll lead that project to completion. Interestingly enough, the company that's doing the work will also be occupying the office space as part of their improvement. So that's exciting, that that company will be investing in the city as well to create and put their offices within that building. The Residence at Bull Point, this is another exciting project that's happening in the waterfront. It's taking the old Hot Rides building that's located on 30 Veterans Moria Parkway. I remember going back in time, my father bought it when it was Bajus Buick, his brand-new '69 Skylark out of there, so I got good memories with that building, but...
I hope you kept it.
Yeah, that six, I know what happened to that '69 Skylark, but I remember my father was, is it rolled out of that little garage on the, on the side there. But it's 22 units, containing, mostly of them are going to be one-bedroom unit, 18 one-bedroom units, and then four two-bedroom units, ranging in size from 600 to 900 square feet. And I think one of the things that's important is when they were marketing this property, the developer indicated that they wanted to see an eclectic mix of couples and single professionals who can afford a new product in Providence. So obviously, this would be a good effort to bring in a younger demographic to the area and create a more affordable unit, because obviously, you're looking at 600 to 900 square feet of space. And then, construction on this property is expected soon with anticipated completion in early 2020. Another exciting project happening right across the street from here, the Lofts on Taunton Avenue. You can see, anybody going down the street can see the work that's going on there. There's been a lot of changes, a lot of improvements to the building, more to come. They're going to be having, again, residential units, three units having two bedrooms, two units will have one bedroom. There'll be AD at the plant apartment down in the lower level, and then there's obviously going to be some nice retail space that'll be available down in the first-floor level. And, you know, that picture below, I took that picture about a week ago, so the work on that is advancing. Nice, Joe Mendez is doing a nice job on building that and putting that together for redevelopment. Obviously, it's going to have a major impact on improving Taunton Avenue corridor and building the economic potential there. Ivy Place, which is located at the location for the old Bohm's Theater, there's a design graphic that's shown below that kind of indicates what they're proposing there. They're looking to create 14 condominiums and then 2,000 square feet of retail space. And it would provide, obviously, significant improvements to a blighted property located at the corner of Ivy and Taunton. And they've received preliminary approval from the East Providence Waterfront Special Development District Commission, and I think they're still working on putting together the financing to make that project work. So right now, it's, it's not moving very quickly right now, but we're hoping that in the near future, that things will get back on track, and they'll put the financing together to get that project to development phase.
May I ask one question about that?
Sure.
It was my understanding, and correct it if it's not right, I want to make sure I'm clear on it, that the financing is contingent upon some action by, is it the Rhode Island Housing Authority?
Yes, they're in negotiations with Rhode Island Housing Authority, right, and that's ongoing. And...
And we have a, we have, there's a stopwatch in place, right? There's a, there's a time, there's a deadline by which we have to have that answer.
There are certain guidelines in place in terms of the timing of that. Don't have those times exactly in front of me right now, but you're right, there is a timeframe where they have to perform those and get those agreements with Rhode Island Housing.
Okay.
And I'm not sure exactly what the timeline is, but hopefully, if we see those things come to fruition, the project will be able to move forward.
But to date, I mean, and this was briefed out a few months ago, I think, at the Waterfront Commission.
Yep.
Nothing has changed about, materially changed about the project itself?
No, I mean, what you're seeing below is kind of what they've proposed in terms of the, the proposal has not changed since that proposal was submitted a few months back. And again, the actual proposal was approved by the Waterfront Commission in terms of what the, what the development was going to look like and what it was going to be composed of. And so, you know, from the standpoint, obviously, this unlike the Lofts, which is moving forward, and the, the project on Veterans Moria Parkway, those are moving forward. This one, again, we'll have to see if this, you know, gets together, what they need to do to make this move.
And if I may, Mr. President, this also, I think, included the transfer of the low-income...
Yes, there was an...
To here from Kettle Point.
Correct.
So if this doesn't go through, what happens to that promise for the low-income?
That would probably be...
If I may just interject, I don't think it's low income, it's affordable.
Affordable, okay.
Affordable, yeah, that's exactly, it's affordable, affordable, the affordable housing component that's required in the waterfront. Details as to relating to those kind of details would probably best requested through Pamela Sherrill.
Yeah.
Our Waterfront Executive Director. She can provide, you know, a current update on what those timelines are. But I just can't give you those answers tonight, because I'm not sure of the exact timeline on those, but she'd...
Sure, we can, and I probably will go to that meeting Thursday, but I just wanted to make the point that should they not come to agreement with Rhode Island Housing and any of the other guidelines, there's a commitment from the city for this affordable housing piece. We probably have to put it somewhere else.
Right, whenever you're talking, right, the deferral of that and from the, from the project that was down on the waterfront, right, the deferral of that would have to be discussed where that...
Okay, thank you.
Colonial Mills. If anybody's familiar with the former Fram property, certainly, most people are familiar with the 105 Pawtucket Avenue building, which is, sits on the Pawtucket Avenue side of the, of the street. But behind there, there's a building that was also owned by Fram, that was part of the laboratory building. And Colonial Mills has recently moved from Pawtucket to East Providence and is completing their move. They've done a lot of work with the building. They're completely rehabilitating it. It's great to see the building back in use for a number of years, it was vacant. So they're within the building right now. They're going to be bringing in, and have already really brought in more than 100 jobs to that location. And then, you know, the city, in fact, also has provided a municipal commercial loan to Colonial Mills to assist them in the move that they've made to the city. And we're very pleased that they were able to relocate and find a manufacturing building that is, you know, going to be a great asset to the community. So we're very pleased to have them here. And then just a quick view of other development sites that are on the, on the kind of radar screen in terms of what's happening. Not really a big update on most of these. East Point, you know, the Superior Court has ordered the marketing and sale of the 29-acre site, so that continues to, to move forward in terms of the promotion of that to be developed. One Mortimer Avenue is a seven-acre site located right down on the water. That site is currently under agreement, and I think the company, the developer that's looking at that is doing their due diligence to determine the viability for redevelopment of that site. A Dexter Road has a new property owner. Currently, it's a trucking terminal, but their long-term plans are to develop this for some sort of mixed-use development in the future. The former Getty Terminal property, all those tanks have been removed. The site is being marketed, but at this point, no formal plans for the redevelopment of that site have been submitted to date. And then the one thing that's generated a lot of the interest lately has been the former Fuji Film property. It's a 2.7-acre site, and the buildings have been recently removed. I've had a conversation with folks from Fuji. They indicate that it's probably their intention to look to get the site cleaned up, leveled off, and then look to develop the property in the future. So that's all very encouraging. And that is actually very much in play with the Henderson Bridge, where all those other properties are kind of there. This one certainly could be added as a, as a very impressive property that could be added to the mix in that, in that location. Watchamoke Square revitalization. This project, basically, the city applied for an EDA grant in 2018 to receive funds to do improvements and to get recommendations for improvements within the Watchamoke Square District. And some of the things that are bolded there would be identifying appropriate locations for welcome and wave-finding signage and branding signage. One of the things that's confusing for a lot of people who come down to the waterfront to enjoy concerts or whatever they're doing, it can be a little bit confusing for visitors. So creating wave-finding signage and branding signage will help people be able to get to the locations easily, more easily. We could, you know, recommend potential locations for the development of additional convenient parking. Parking can always be a concern, especially as this project develops with the Bull Point developments occurring, you know, the entertainment venues, there's going to be a need for greater parking, so they're going to be taking a look at that. Recommend strengthening connectivity and walkability, streets and complete streets, that type of thing, better safety for bicycles, of course. Working with the Arts Council to incorporate public art in the revitalization and redevelopment efforts, and developing other placemaking recommendations for the Watchamoke Square that would help to promote downtown vibrancy and entrepreneurship. The city's also received a $75,000 grant from the Commerce Corporation to do some improvements that would help directly put those types of improvements, physical improvements, to the Watchamoke Square District. And of course, that's all tied into the Watchamoke Square. Arts and entertainment, how we'd want to create a tax area for, you know, artists to be able to function in that location as related to the legislation, I think the mayor referenced. This would be certainly a place where you could have artists who'd be able to get the benefit of those tax benefits with legislative updates to create that arts and entertainment district. And this is certainly one of those locations where you could benefit greatly from that. Just a quick slide, it's hard to read these, but some of the important properties that are down there. You know, you've got Alice Waterfront, the Sculpture Park, the George Redman East Bay Bike Path, the 133 Club, the Black Duck Tavern, the Comedy Connection, the Oddfellows Hall, obviously, we mentioned that earlier, and of course, the Residence at Bull Point, and the East Bay Bike Path, are just some of the things that are important parts of what'll be looked at in that study that's being completed by the firm. And I think as, as was indicated, we're also looking to get the resolution approved that would allow the selection of the firm to move forward and stop doing that, the work on that project. So looking forward to that. Riverside Square revitalization is another project that basically the Community Development Office is working. The city's received a $70,000 Commerce Rhode Island Main Street grant for the Riverside Square area, and they're basically doing this through the Community Development Office. Kevin Alveson, the firm Kevin Alveson, has submitted some design proposals. There's actually a meeting scheduled for September 24th to hear from the public on what people think of the various designs and develop a design, a final design for the improvements that are going to be done there. And it's expected that the improvements on that square would be completed sometime in the fall. And David Backrack's kind of heading up that, that effort at this time. Just a quick one on IGS, one of our major developments, one of our major industrial tenants in the city. They actually completed a $48,000, $48,000 square-foot addition to their facility in 2018, and obviously, have had great success in our city. They're looking to potentially provide an additional 80,000-square-foot building in the near, not in the near future, but they've proposed that, received a master plan approval to do that. And so you could be seeing as much as 80,000 in additional manufacturing space that could be built there in the future as well. Waterfront Events, Bull Point Park, the seasonal venue there obviously has been very successful. Rhode Island Waterfront Enterprises has purchased the South Key, and they're looking at concepts to develop what would be something akin to the venue that you see up at the Rockland Trust Bank Pavilion in Boston with a more permanent structure. Again, the image there isn't very large, but you can see what's up there in the Seaport District of Boston. Something like that could potentially be what you'd be looking at in the city. And then obviously, the image to the right is, shows the Bull Point, the South Key, that would be the location where all of this kind of development would be occurring. Also, that would be the potential area where the wind farm lay-down area would be located on that potential site. Narragansett Park Plaza, this project is up on Newport Avenue. Basically, they've gotten a master plan approval for this project. Right now, they have not moved forward at this point, but I did want to put the slide up here to indicate that this project, they're still looking to move forward with this project, but at this point in time, it's not moving immediately. But they do have master plan approval. They've been working, if you look up there, you can see they've demolished some buildings up there, they've done some work, and it is their intention to move forward. Just a quick overview, the development would be 100,000 square feet of office space, 240,000 square feet of retail and restaurant space, and 72 residential units.
Question on that, Jim. That was a major proposal we received, approval from City of Pawtucket as well as East Providence there. So that's a go, right? Are they considering not doing it?
No, no, it's not, no, they're, they're...
They're in for...
They're in, yes. It's just a matter that, you know, Carpiato has, you know, obviously, they have a lot of projects that they work with around, around this, not just Rhode Island, but Massachusetts. They have indicated that it is their intention to move forward. Obviously, if you look, you can still see they're doing activities up there. They've been doing some demolition work. They've been doing other things in preparation. And it's been, you know, indicated that it's their intention to come back for preliminary plan. And, you know, so I'd say this project, yes, is definitely moving forward. It's just a matter of the timeline, you know, and where they'll be moving. They've been obviously in touch with Pawtucket and the city of East Providence.
I mean, it's a major development for our Newport Avenue side, and hopefully, you know, comes to fruition.
Yeah. And Kelly Coats from Carpiato, president of Carpiato, has indicated that, you know, they, they consider this to be an important project moving forward. They've obviously made references to it as it relates to like Chapel View, kind of like East Bay version of Chapel View. So it's an exciting project, no doubt.
Jim, I've got some question. You mentioned a potential wind farm in one of those projects.
Not a wind farm, a lay-down area potentially for, where they would bring, you know, potentially... The state has been interested in creating an area where a pertinence is associated with wind development, could potentially bring like, like materials that could be deposited there for movement. Obviously, there's a lot of offshore wind that's being developed, and just take advantage of that. And that's where the state's been looking at that. And again, I would also say that getting an update potentially from the Waterfront District Commission Executive Director on that would be a good, a good thing to potentially have as well, because she'd be able to provide more information on the, on the status of that project. Just a quick, quick... Just a quick, quick overview on some of the other projects that have been kind of happened over the past couple of years. The Route 6 Commercial Car, the Seco Island Commons Project, that's a major development that has pretty much reached full occupancy. Adventures obviously moved from Providence to East Providence. One of the things that was recently announced, that one of the 5,000 fastest-growing companies in the U.S., and it's very exciting, they've made the commitment to come to East Providence. Just a quick one on O'Reilly's Auto Parts, we had one that was located up on Newport Avenue. A second project is being developed at 22770 Pituckett Avenue, and that's currently under construction. So just a few more projects that are occurring currently that are in place. The Opportunity Zone, one of the things about our waterfront and Track 104 is that there's a designated Opportunity Zone in our city, and there are certain tax benefits for investment in the Opportunity Zone. Rather than get into a lot of details, the city's been working diligently, our Opportunity Zone Committee's been discussing this project and marketing its potential for development because there are a number of projects within the waterfront, within Track 104 that potentially could take advantage of the Opportunity Zone's tax credits that are being offered. That's a federal program. We actually have a website on our city's business page that is dedicated to the Opportunity Zone, and we're going to be continuing to work to develop a prospectus that will be released probably in the fall and provide more details to investors who might be interested in that program. We're working also with the Commerce Rhode Island to promote the Opportunity Zone and have been working cooperatively with them as well. And then just for information, that map shows kind of where the Opportunity Zone is, the green shaded area as to where the location is for our Opportunity Zone. As the mayor had announced, the city has entered into an agreement with the Small Business Development Center to work in partnership with the city to provide business startup technical assistance to new and existing businesses in the city. Dennis McCarthy's been meeting with business clients and with the intention of providing assistance for them, business plan startup, other assistance for them, and working with anybody who really contacts the city to get additional support from the Small Business Development Center.
To the President, if I may. Jim, may I call you Jim?
Yes.
I'm Nate, so, we've never met, so, nice to meet you. I've tried to read as much as I can about how Opportunity Zones work. I went back to the guiding statutes, I went back to, you know, the IRS regulations, and a lot of it seems kind of like the Wild West to me right now. How good a field do you think the City of East Providence has on how those are to be implemented or how investment is to take hold in those Opportunity Zones, you know, across Rhode Island? Specifically, really, in East Providence, where I know we only have the one.
Right.
Right, so we can really watch that basket, but it seems to me like there's an opportunity for people who really know what they're doing to make out like bandits at the expense potentially of the municipality.
And when you look at the initial Opportunity Zones that have taken advantage, most of them are occurring in places where, you know, you kind of have low-hanging fruit and places where they can come in and work quickly to get the projects moving. So you see a lot of places in kind of urban environments, there's been a number in Florida where they've come in and taken advantage of those quick, easy-to-develop sites, and that's where you've seen most of the Opportunity Zone investment occurring. There are timelines for the Opportunity Zone. The Treasury Department has been developing regulations. There are safe harbor regulations in terms of like getting investments in a timely fashion. There are timelines that kind of tie into the end of this current year to basically invest in these Opportunity Zones. The biggest priority, I think, for communities is to promote our sites and the assets of our community, which is why we've been developing a prospectus that kind of talks about, you know, the benefits of the city, you know, our, you know, the things that we're doing, the economic development aspects of our community, providing where our growth industries are and the healthcare industries, for example, we have a lot of advancement. And we've been kind of looking at the sites that are in the waterfront that potentially could take advantage from investors who want to come in and look at places like the Chevron Development Site, the other locations on Warren Avenue, maybe doing investment along Warren Avenue in a way that would help this create sort of like a, if you can imagine, a downtown Main Street like East Greenwich kind of coming to East Providence where you see those kinds of investments that could come in. And then you get these investors who might get together and create this Opportunity Zone, this Opportunity Fund, if you will, it's called an Opportunity Fund when they get together and invest, and to be able to see these investments move forward and take the tax credits. The only thing that's a bit of a concern is that obviously, time is of the essence with the Opportunity Zone because the investments have to be made by a certain timeline, and of course, those timelines are ticking away. And so it's important that we continue to promote these efforts, and that's what we're planning to do this fall. In terms of like, you know, how it affects East Providence to make sure that we're getting, you know, a good investment and that we're not getting, I guess, I wouldn't say, you know, the quality of the investment, we want to make sure we're getting good quality investment. That's an important part of what we want to see in what they're going to do and come in and develop these sites, you know. Other sites that we've looked at was like, you know, the Rose Furniture Building is another possibility for something that we could see investment. Properties up on Bright Ridge Avenue off of Warren Avenue, that corner parcel potentially could be developed. So it's important that we make sure that we have a diligent effort to properly market the Opportunity Zone. Also important that we work with Commerce RI because we've been partners with them in terms of promotion of the Opportunity Zone as well.
So I think, and if I may issue a challenge to your department, certainly, the promotion is important. I agree with you 100%. I would ask that, you know, while you go through that promotion, while you get folks that are interested in maybe moving in, you know, please keep that in the back of your head, right? That value of the investment. And if you see something that, you know, the council needs to take action on with regard to a new ordinance or whatever, you know, please raise the flag and let us know right away.
Absolutely. And the other thing too, we'd like to talk about potentially too, is potentially having a summit, an Opportunities Zone Summit where we might be able to invite real estate brokers, developers to come and tour our waterfront as a promotional effort, and this summit would potentially indicate, you know, the benefits that we'd get from people coming in to invest. One of the things that we would hope for, like the Metacoma Country Club, for example, was one of the ones we looked at initially. Unfortunately, it's a sin tax type of investment, so you can't invest in the Metacoma Country Club property, but there are so many other properties along the waterfront that potentially could benefit from this. And I think you're right, we need to basically be diligent in our efforts to make sure that we keep the council apprised of how this is moving forward. I think the mayor's office certainly would do that in terms of like keeping the communication channels open as we proceed to promote this benefit to the development community. It's very competitive too, as you know, there's like 80,000 Opportunity Zone districts nationwide, so everybody's kind of competing for a piece of the pie here. And I think from the standpoint of the city, I think East Providence has done a great job. I think we're one of the more active promoters of our Opportunity Zone, and I certainly have talked to people from Commerce RI who've indicated that we have done a great job of promoting our zone in comparison to the, not to say that the others aren't doing it, but I think we've had a good team of people working together to promote our Opportunity Zone. The people on the committee that have worked to kind of promote the Opportunity Zone have been working very hard to promote it, and I think when you compare it to other communities, I think we're at the top of the list in terms of the quality of our promotion on that.
Well, I can't imagine there's many Opportunity Zones nationwide that, you know, begin at a brand-new high school and find their way down to the water, so, you know, we're in a unique position.
Absolutely. I mean, we're just talking, I had the slide up, the high school, the new high school, I mean, those kinds of things are just like wonderful signals to the development community that you're committed to a community that's, you know, teaching, creating a student that's going to be able to learn in a way that's going to get them into the technology industries to, you know, become scientists and all the other things, you know, the lab spaces that are being created. All that is incredible benefit to an economic promotional plan where you're looking to say, hey, our community's committed to educating our students and creating a better economy, and that's certainly a great signal when you do that with the new high school promotion. Of course, we've always had a great relationship with the Chamber of Commerce, continue to have a great working relationship with Laura McNamara and the members of the Chamber of Commerce. Scott Haggerty is an ex-officio member of our Economic Development Commission. He comes to the meetings and provides a lot of insight. That's been very helpful to the commission as it deliberates on a number of economic development issues. And then I just, you know, I had this in here as part of what we presented to the Economic Committee, to the Chamber of Commerce. We do have our commercial loan programs that are available to businesses that are seeking loans from $10,000 to $100,000. The lending rate is very good. We also have a commercial microloan program, and there's also Waterfront Commission Affordable Housing Funds, $744,000 in funds that are available through the commission as gap financing. So, and we've had a number of successful loans over the years, as I mentioned earlier. Colonial Mills recently had a closing on a loan, and so we've had a number of loans through our, both our commercial loan program and our microloan program, so those are things that I think help the business community in terms of investment and getting an excellent rate to boom. You know, 20% below prime is an excellent rate for the lending rate. Our tax stabilization program, obviously any businesses that are looking to build new development can get, take advantage of our tax stabilization program. I would ask anybody who might be doing any kind of redevelopment efforts, expanding their building or building new buildings, contact me to discuss the benefits that are available through our tax stabilization program. And that pretty much is it. I tried to, you know, cover it as quickly as I could, but I hope I answered, provided enough information for you to understand where we are right now in terms of economic development, the things that are happening, and be happy to answer any questions as you go through what I just presented.
Thank you for that presentation. The only thing that I would recommend is getting that Getty Terminal to clean up that overgrown vegetation that they have in that area there.
Yeah.
It's just getting a little, a lot out of hand at this point in time, but...
It's been an ongoing effort to try to get them, they were doing, you know, standing water there and a number of things that they've had to deal with.
And then the vegetation is just mailing
I'll make sure that
Out of heat as well.
Pam Sherrill.
Any further questions from the council?
Well, as I do, as it pertains to the resolution, if I may.
Sure.
So on the resolution, the grant provided 144,000, and the city is matching funds of $96,730. Is this just for the analysis and recommendation study, or is it for a project to revitalize, to build? Where are these funds going exactly?
Okay, the 144,000 portion comes from the EDA. It's provided to develop recommendations for improvements, that urban design improvements. The match that we're talking about, there's $22,500 in Urban Development Action Grant, our economic development funds, to match as also part of the design effort. The 75,000, which adds up, if you combine the 22.5 and the 75,000, you get the 97,000. 75,000 of that is to complete physical improvements, which could include signage, banners, physical improvements down on the waterfront, and that would be administered through the Commerce Department of the State of Rhode Island. And then the other thing we're doing as part of this is because we're providing an in-kind match for all the city staff to align with a, an in-kind match that's required under the EDA grant. But it would be, the core of the study would be for recommendations for improvement urban design.
Okay, and so, and that is from the Commerce Commission or from the City of East Providence?
The, which part of it, the 144?
No, that I know is from the
The Fed, right, the EDA. Yeah, the 75,000 will come from the grant that was approved by the Commerce Rhode Island Group. They also, again, thankfully, the city got two grants, we also got a grant down in Riverside Square, so we're lucky to have those two bags of money to do this. And then again, the UDAG money that I'm referring to comes from our Economic Development Program. That money was pledged as a match to the Commerce RI grant, but we can use that toward the urban design aspects of the project.
Okay. So no money, no monetary amount is coming actually from a budget department from the city, from the taxpayers?
No, it's all money that's coming from
Grants and other resources, right, that's
In-kind resources from staff, you know, our time being spent working on the project as well.
But we will be, the city will be matching, fun matching that, right, you just mentioned?
Yeah, I mean, the match will come, again, we basically use, we've used our UDAG funds in the past for a variety of different economic initiatives. I think we used UDAG funds in the past for like All-America City Competition stuff too, so when we need to do that, we've been able to use those and match. And the in-kind match is basically to provide any kind of overview, if there's workshops, if there's people that need to get out and do surveys, survey work, traffic crews, survey crews. Our city crews will be using our regular time to make that in-kind match during the business day, obviously, for us.
Okay.
That was one of my concerns as well.
Where was the money coming from?
Initially, yes.
Because it doesn't really say it so much here in the resolution that it's grant money, it's just, you know, saying that the city authorizes the mayor to provide that monetary amount for the project, so I was wondering where that money's coming from.
Yeah, there's no additional tax burden that's going to be incurred as part of this, it's all coming from existing resources that are in place already.
Sure, so various funds and allocated, okay, great.
And just so everyone knows, we transitioned from the presentation onto the resolution, which indicates the state's State of Rhode Island Province Plantation, the City of East Providence Resolution Number, Resolution Support of Funding for the Watchamooket Waterfront Gateway Project. And essentially, that's all part of the discussion that was just carried on. So I'm just going to ask the council if they have any questions at this point in time with respect to this resolution.
Do you have, would you like to begin? I've kind of monopolized our time.
No, no.
Being kind of a procurement nut, you know, I looked at the bids that came in for the study. I noticed that the pricing is kind of all over the map. Do we feel like we did a good job of communicating what the actual requirement was to the market, or was there, in your opinion, what do you think is the reason for kind of that discrepancy in pricing?
The process that was identified, it was kind of a three-step process. Basically, the RFPs came in, we reviewed the technical proposals, and then ranked those. We had a committee of people that included city staff who sat down, including the Public Works Department, the Waterfront Commission, the city engineer. We all sat down, reviewed the technical proposals, and ranked them. After ranking under the RFP proposal, we identified the top ranking, which in our case was two. We identified two top-ranking firms, interviewed them, and then after that interview process, we ranked them again based upon a combination of the technical proposal and the interview process. And then as a final step, we opened the fee proposal amounts that were part of that. And as a result of those three elements together, we determined that the firm that's identified in the resolution, Beta, had the, Beta Group had the highest ranking proposal, and also, even though their fee proposal was not the lowest, it all factored into them being the highest-ranked respondent, and that's the reason why we, as a group, selected the contractor. And we also coordinated this, obviously, with the mayor's office. He was deeply involved with the process, and we were all, you know, working to communicate that as we proceeded through the process.
So I'm very encouraged to hear that because, you know, the low bidder technique is great when you're buying things like brooms and pencils, it's not so great when you're buying technically complex services. So I'm glad to hear, you know, you went through the evaluated proposal process with this to choose the offeror who's actually providing the best value, or who you see is providing the best value to the city, so.
Yes, I think we, I think as a team effort throughout the process, I think it worked very well, and I think obviously, based on what we did, I'm confident that we picked the best firm to proceed with this project, you know, in combination with all the work that we did together to come to that conclusion.
Any other further questions from the council? Mr. President, I think we had a very, very concise report, and it sounds like there was cross-sectional support from all the departments, where you all agree Beta had the best proposal, this is not an impact on the budget, and therefore, I would move approval of the Resolution in Support of Funding for the Watchamooket Waterfront Gateway Project.
I second that motion.
So we have a motion on the floor from Councilman Rodrick to approve the resolution, seconded by Councilwoman Souza. Madam Click, may we have a roll call vote?
Councilman Cahoon.
Aye.
Councilman Morado.
Aye.
Councilwoman Souza.
Aye.
Council Vice President Rodrick.
Aye.
And Council President Brito.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And thank you, Mr. Moran. Okay, so if we could just jump back course here.
We're on ordinances.
We, well, we, okay, we're gonna...
Unless you want to finish. Do you want to finish with? Did you want to finish with? Mike, can you give it a minute?
Let's go to ordinance.
Okay, next on the... Yeah, mic's not going anywhere. Next is ordinances, public hearing, second passage for vote. An ordinance of the City of East Providence authorizing the city to finance the acquisition, construction, furnishing, and equipping of a new high school and all expenses incident construction, furnishing, and equipping of a new high school and all expenses incident thereto, including but not limited to cost of design, demolition, athletic fields, landscaping, and parking by the issuance of not more than $189,500,000 bonds, notes, and/or other evidences of indebtedness, therefore subject to approval of state housing aid at a reimbursement rate or state share ratio of not less than 50% of expenditures eligible for state aid, and provided that the authorization shall be reduced by any grant received from the School Building Authority Capital Fund sponsored by cap... Councilman Cahoon.
So to what Madam Clerk just read is the language exactly from the, the bond, the ballot item that the City of East Providence voted on last November. Again, as we heard, you know, the mayor discussing tonight, the exact reimbursement rate is still to be determined. It will be greater than 50%. It will be greater than the city's state allocation of 54%. What remains to be seen is exactly how many of those incentives we capture per ride, and the other state authorities making the decision. So that said, there have been no changes in the proposed ordinance from first passage. This has been advertised. So I believe this is a public hearing on this particular item, right? So I'll answer any questions from the council, and certainly any that the public has.
So again, this is a public hearing, so anyone from the public wishing to speak for or against this ordinance, please step up to the podium. Again, I'm going to repeat myself. This is a public hearing. Anyone willing to speak for or against this ordinance, please speak, please step up to the podium. If not, public comment is closed at this point in time, and it's at the council's pleasure to, to vote.
And I'll take advantage of the fact that the mayor's here. Mr. Mayor, I know you understand the urgency of this particular item, so with that said, I'm going to move to approve second passage of the ordinance as read.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to move for passage for a second, for a second passage, motion to approve.
Second.
And we have a second.
Councilman Cahoon.
Aye.
Councilman Morado.
Aye.
Councilwoman Souza.
Aye.
Council Vice President Rodrick.
Aye.
And Council President Brito.
Aye.
Thank you, councilman.
Next item on the agenda is in ordinance, this is also second passage, public hearing. In ordinance, an amendment of Chapter 11 of the Revised Ordnances of the City of East Providence, Rhode Island, 1998, as amended entitled personnel sponsored by Council Vice President Rodrick.
Again, this is a public hearing, so anybody wishing to speak for or against this ordinance, please step up to the podium.
I have a couple of...
Okay, someone?
Good evening, city council. I'm Victor Santos. I'm the Human Resources Director for the city. It's a pleasure to speak to you again this evening. I would just, one, one more time reiterate the importance of passing this. I think that it does, the way that, the changes that we are proposing would bring great benefits to the city, to the processes in HR. In my three months here, I have seen the processes that are in place, and I can attest that it's a fair and equitable process, and that I would recommend doing away with the certifications of lists of the personnel hearing board. So once again, I would ask that you please consider the changes before you. Thank you.
A pleasure of the council.
I would like to, I'll make a few comments if I could.
Please do.
So from the first passage to tonight, there's been a couple of events that had taken place. One was a letter from one of our Personnel Board members, Wendy Caputo. And Ms. Caputo, in a letter that was submitted to the city, the town council, through the clerk, and a, and a letter that was notarized by the clerk. At the last meeting, Ms. Caputo pointed out a few inconsistencies from our first discussion during first passage. And the urgency that's being pointed out, Ms. Caputo, Ms. Caputo pointed out that the, the reason why, that the reason for this ordinance that's being requested to change is inconsistent. The, the urgency, the quorum, she was never asked to have quorums for any of the hiring processes that were picked out in, in the first passage. But I would also like to point out that a few other inconsistencies is that this is not, the Personnel Hearing Board slash Hearing Board is not unique to the City of East Providence. There are plenty of other municipalities that have Personnel Hearing Boards. And a quick search that I did without any effort at all, Yapha Tuckett, Tiverton, Bristol, Cranston, Warwick, and the list, I'm sure, will go on. This was a quick reference that I did. The Personnel Hearing Board is in place to keep the hiring process, to have the hiring process kept in, have some integrity. You know, they take the lists of all the candidates, they take, for police exam, for example, they take the score for the physical agility, the oral interview, the written exam, and so on, and they put that on a list according to rank. And whoever's doing the hiring process will pick from number one to wherever on that list. To sort of, to give a person who is hiring, doing the actual picking, the power to certify that list, I think takes away from the integrity of why this ordinance was put into place, when it was put into place. And the other inconsistencies that I would like to point out, and this would be a question more for the solicitor, we recently appointed a member to the Hearing Board, mayor approved, mayor pick, council approval. And I would like to know how we did that and how we were guided down that road when that was done, that was not done correctly. For example, the Hearing Board is not a charter governed board. It's a ordinance governed board. And for the ordinance, members of that board should be appointed by the city council. And in fact, our current ordinance states that there are three members that should be serving on that board. We currently now have four. And furthermore, if we want to correct this ordinance so that there's no issues with quorums, I think we should follow what pretty much every other municipality is doing, and that's to have five members on that board. So that way, Mr. Santos' concerns that they couldn't get a quorum, that won't happen again.
May I address...
Let me just answer that question. I believe there was a charter change that expanded the number of the Personnel Board to five members.
That was his only board, not the personnel.
There was also the Personnel Board as well.
I read this charter quite a few times, and no mention of Personnel Board is in this charter. The zoning board, you are correct, they just recently adopted the ordinance to conform with the recently charter, charter change, but not the, the Personnel Hearing Board is not in the charter. I could be wrong, but I did read this charter quite a few times, so... So my question would be if it's not...
The councilman, you have that right there?
So my question is, if it's not governed by charter, so how was it that we did an appointment to add a fourth member by ordinance, but supposed to have only three, and it's supposed to be council?
I know there's somewhere in here, and I would look for it, and obviously, if you had asked me the question before tonight's meeting, I would have got you the answer. But I believe that there was a charter change that expanded the number of members from three to five. The reason why I know that is because some of the union members who have grievances before the Personnel Board have refused to go forward with their grievances until that board has been expanded to the number of five. So there is somewhere, maybe it's an ordinance, but I believe it's a charter, that that, that board, that board was increased from three to five members. And the appointment authority was put squarely within the mayor's office with the approval, I believe, of the city council. Just give me a second, I'll find it, but I need more than a few seconds to look for it.
Mr. President, while, while the attorney is looking for that, if I can make a comment. Unless, Councilman Morado, do you have more to, to add?
Well, I just want to say that's by what I have read in the charter, which is not in there. And based on, if we really want to correct this ordinance...
I'm sorry, can I have it?
If you really want to correct this ordinance, we should increase it to five members.
I'm sorry, Article nine.
We should keep the Personnel Board intact if you want to fix it.
I'm sorry, Council President, sorry, Councilman, I mean to interrupt. Article nine of the charter says, "The Hearing Board shall consist of five members appointed by the mayor, subject to council approval, at least one member to be resident of each ward of the city." That's Article nine, section 9.1, subsection two.
Council President, I'd like to address three more issues.
Excuse me, that's page, on the bottom, it says supplemental page number 67, in the, in the charter.
One, no one is proposing that we defunct the Personnel Hearing Board. That is not in question here. I think the Personnel Hearing Board serves a purpose. We are talking about one item, which is the certification of lists. What Councilman Morado is referring to in other cities is because other cities go by civil service exams and have lists, which is a different type of system, and those lists have to be certified. We're also not suggesting that we do away with lists. We would keep that intact as well. The process would be the same. Nothing will change. All we're doing is trying to eliminate that board certifying the list. We're not saying that the, the list won't happen, and the ratings of how people got on the list won't happen. That will stay everything intact. Nothing will change. We're just looking at the certifying process. How the people get to the list will be the same way as it's been for years. The oral, the written, a panel comprised of various people in the city, the EEO officer being part of the hiring process, or a designee from his or her office. So we're not trying to change any of that process.
So I want to apologize for, I, I missed that in the charter. However, it still brings back to my point. So if anything, this ordinance needs to be changed to five members, and we should not have, and it should be, remain the same as far as who certifies the list, because the argument at the last, at the first passage was that they couldn't get a quorum to do that. So by extending it to five members, I don't believe there'll ever be a problem, because they have, they'll have three members to form a quorum, so. As an ordinance stance tonight, even as, as it is right now, it doesn't match the, what was adopted in the charter anyway, so...
Obviously, if the charter overrules the ordinance, so if the ordinance is inconsistent with the charter, the charter prevails. So even the charter may say three members, we have to pretend it says five members, and it's a technical change, but the only thing that this proposal is doing is, and the merits of it is not for not to me to argue, the only thing this thing is doing is substituting the term of city, for mayor, for city manager, and again, eliminating the power of the, of the certification of the list, which is the end process. That's after all the other personnel code information has been met with, the testing, the scoring, the interviews, whatnot. Once you get to that end, the only thing the Personnel Board doing is certifying that that process was followed. They don't, they can't change the order, they don't change the order, and so that's, that's all it is doing.
So if that's the case, so why bother changing it then? If, if there's no issue with how, you know, what you're saying, you're minimizing, you know, that portion of this, this conversation, so why...
I'm not minimizing, I think the, the modus, the, the, the motivation for the change was that it was taking too long to convene a hearing board to certify that list because of open meeting requirements, they can only meet within 40 hours notice, the posting requirements, getting people to come to the meeting. I don't, I can't speak to how, what difficulty you might have had of doing it.
One position in the library took six months, so...
So that's, that's an example that we've had, that they could not meet for six months because either there was a quorum, or the quorum issue, or they couldn't post it, or they couldn't, they were on vacation. I'm not getting involved whether you believe that's a good reason or not reason, but I'm just telling you that, that's what, what the reason was.
Does the council have any questions for me?
Mr. President, I don't know, maybe, Mr. Santos, it might be a question, I don't know. My, my problem tonight is regarding a couple of things. We were told that we would get, in addition to information about this resolution, which I was asked to introduce, that we would get three letters of support from the current members of the board. To this day, I haven't seen those letters at all. We got one letter, and that member opposed it. The other, the other problem I have is that we had a council member who was requested to have a letter read here, and that, that letter was by a, a board member and also a city resident. And the council member asked the city clerk to read that letter. That's part of what our clerk does, she reads correspondence. And I was very uncomfortable and not happy that, that you sent a letter to the clerk in so many words chastising her for doing that. It's, the clerk's position is a position that reports to the city council, and if you had a problem with that letter, you could have addressed us. It was a, it was a council request to have a redder, a letter read. And I'm not so sure that a department head should chastise the city clerk for reading a letter, which she was asked to do by a council member. Councilman Morado introduced a letter and simply said, "Would you read this?" So that added to me being uncomfortable with this whole process, the fact that we never got the three letters of support that we were told we were going to get. In fact, we got one letter, which was in opposition. So I'm not prepared tonight to support this.
Well, I, I didn't think I chastised anyone. I asked a question about the rules of the city council under public comment regarding writing a letter versus being, the public actually being present. I didn't feel that my email to the city clerk was chastising in any way. As a matter of fact, I see see the city solicitor and asked him the same question. It's just, what were the rules? Because I was not here to defend myself, and the letter did mention my name. So I didn't feel the letter was chastising in any way. Regarding the other two letters of, the other letters of recommendation, I saw two, of one of which I have there in my packet, from a city, from a Personnel Hearing Board. And at the last hearing, Mr. Fertado had one from another Hearing Board, Personnel Hearing Board. So I saw two letters of recommendation from, and I, I have a copy of one, if you'd like to see it. Where that got up, where that, as far as how that got to you or didn't get to you, I would, I was going through Mr. Fertado through that.
Maybe other council members received it, I haven't received anything. And we were supposed to get them at that last meeting as part of the package to approve.
I sent them all to Mr. Fertado because I didn't, I thought that he was the go-between in supplying stuff to the, to the board, to the city council.
I know, Mr. Fertado's been very good, very cooperative with us. I, I don't know what happened, but we didn't get the letters, and the email, I don't want to read it and get into it anymore, but I'm just saying I wasn't happy with that.
Councilman Morado, would you like to table this and add the, make it hold according to the charter?
Sure, I can tell you, I'm not, I'm not going to vote to support it tonight. If council wants a table, it's fine with me, or I'll take any other action, but...
Mr. Santos, can we get a copy of that letter as well? Do you have the copy from Mr. Fertado's?
I have one, one of them with me here, if you'd like a copy of that now.
Sure. Because I thought that was going to be presented to the council as well.
Yeah, I didn't get a copy of any letters.
Actually, what I would like to do, if it's okay with you, would start all over with this ordinance, instead of tabling it. And then we submitting it the proper way with the proper language, as we did with the zoning, to meet charter.
I'm, I'm okay with that.
Someone's going to give me the language, do you want to add any?
The language is going to be from the charter, the five members.
Is that the only change?
I believe so, correct.
Well, if we're going to start from scratch, we'll put something together and...
So are we keeping the changes that we have now, including adding the five?
I'm saying it's status quo right now.
Okay, so...
We're not changing anything, right? So it's status quo.
It sounds like the councilman's withdrawing his support for this.
Let's find out, I understand, I just want to, so can someone email me the changes that you wanted?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Would you like a copy of...
Are there copies for the council members?
Sure.
Or is just that one?
Or is just that one?
I just have that one.
Okay.
I wasn't prepared, but I can send it to you tomorrow.
You want to send it to me tomorrow?
You want to give it to the clerk, and you can make copies and?
That's the only one I had, so if I could have a copy of that back, I'd appreciate it.
Okay, so as it stands at this point in time, you're withdrawing your.
It's tabled and.
It's tabled, okay.
Is that the procedure, Mike?
You're tabling this for more amendments?
Correct.
Okay, so we need to make a motion to table.
Okay.
I move that this item be tabled, and more language will be sent to the city solicitor.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor at this point in time to table the discussion on personnel ordinance. Would anyone like to second that motion?
I'll second it.
Okay, Madam Clerk, roll call, vote please.
Councilman Cahoon.
Aye.
Councilman Murado.
Aye.
Councilwoman Souza.
Aye.
Council Vice President Rodrick.
Aye.
And Council President Brito.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Okay, that goes under reports of other city officials. City's Solicitor, Michael J. Marcello, Claims Committee report.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Members of the city council, as you know, at six-thirty this evening, the city council met in Claims Committee to discuss various items as listed on the agenda under litigation. There were two items, no action was taken, it was just a status update. Under the claims, the first claim of Albert M., excuse me, Albert E. Musard, was referred to the Rowan Intermodal Local Trust for processing and claim processing by unanimous vote. The claim of Gail Rubiero, an amount of $1,226.82, was approved by the city council. Under sewer abatement charges, the following sewer abatement charges were approved, amounts indicated by unanimous votes. The claim of Patricia Clark Chatavong, an amount of $48.33. The sewer abatement charge of Double R Five LLC, an amount of $1,831.49. The claim of, excuse me, the sewer charge abatement of Lionel E. Maderos, an amount of $225.54. The sewer abatement charge of Dorothy Nisai, an amount of $202.61. The sewer charge abatement of Rosemary S. Rotelli, an amount of $329.40. And the, finally, the, the claim of Arthur R. and Diane R. Vincent, an amount of $48.33, was approved. All those will be processed by the Law Department in accordance with the council wishes. That concludes my report, Madam Clerk and Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Solicitor. And with that being said, we're going to move and proceed on.
The next item is under resolutions for vote. The first one is resolution authorizing the mayor to allocate the capital improvement account for the purchase of a new rescue vehicle, first lease payment, lease payment, and cost of repairs for the newly purchased ladder truck for the fire department, sponsored by Council President Brito.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Mr. President, certainly an item we've talked about for a while, and the mayor wants to add to that, but it's something I'm prepared to make a motion to approve, but if mayor wants to.
If you're ready to make that motion, I'll just walk away from the podium quietly and slowly.
Least said might be best. I mean, I don't know if there are other comments, but we, we know we need this equipment, and we've talked about it for quite a while, and I'm prepared to, but I'll hold off on my motion if there's something that needs to be said.
Well, I have a.
You may proceed anyway, we have two council members that are not present at this time, so.
Want me to hold?
No, no, you can go on, I mean, in other words, we won't be voting at this very moment.
I did want to bring, just for your information, I think I sent the communication out. Chief Almation retired yesterday after very long and good service here for the community, and today we have Acting Chief Glenn Quick, who is prepared to speak on the resolution if any information is needed. Chief Quick?
Good evening.
We're going to be passing out some correspondence.
Is it referred to as Acting Chief? Excuse me? Referring to you as Acting Chief?
Acting Chief, yes, sir.
Can I ask some questions through the chair?
Sure.
So, Chief Almation presented us with this issue a while back. This is the same circumstances, correct? As far as the ladder truck?
That is correct.
But was there, was there a ladder truck, a used one purchased between that point and this point?
There were two ladder trucks that were purchased and used.
Used?
Right.
And, so what happened with those?
They're in, well, one of them is in service right now, we're going to be putting the other one in service, but they're a Band-Aid to the problem. So, we're looking for the release of $692,517, and that's for a purchase of a new rescue truck and a new ladder truck.
Okay, thank you.
So, the rescue truck, and I'm just going to throw out a hint now, as we approach the budget season, we all know that Ward One has been absent of a rescue for some time now, and I can understand a number of years ago, or a few years ago, where Chief Almation had discussed the reasons why we did not have a rescue truck. The numbers just didn't substantiate as to why we should. However, since then, those numbers have significantly grown. Case in point, last year, and I don't have the figures in front of me, but we had a test rescue for the month of, not the August that just passed last month, but previous August, and we had a number of calls, and the calls have increased over the years for that particular area in the northern part of the city. So, just as a hint, just want to put it out there, whether it's this rescue truck or another rescue truck, one of the things that I'll be looking for during the budget is a rescue truck up in, a rescue truck in Ward One.
Okay, we appreciate that.
So, I just want to, just expand upon Councilman Rod, excuse me, Councilman Murado. We had already, the fire department had purchased two ladders, so we have two used ladders trucks at this point in time?
Yes, sir.
And we're seeking for another, what use?
Another new ladder truck.
Another, well, a new one?
A new ladder truck.
So, we'll have three ladders, but we need two, if I'm not mistaken, right?
Two are in the contract.
Two are in the contract that we have to have, and the ones what, like in, once, in an event that one goes down, we'll have the other?
Well, the two right now that we have replaced, the two other ladders, the two ladders that we actually had, weren't working, they've had major repairs.
Okay.
Right now, we are running a city service ladder, which means the aerial does not work.
Okay.
Okay, and that's in Rumford right now. And one of the newly used ladder trucks are in Riverside, it's in Riverside at this time.
Okay.
It's going to take about a year for a new ladder to come in.
Right, and this falls within the budget that you, that the city council, the previous city council had set aside, what was that, the seven hundred fifty?
Seven hundred fifty thousand dollars.
Fifty thousand dollars.
That's correct.
And then the new one would be, would be looking as part of the capital campaign?
Yes.
Excuse me, you got a capital?
Capital improvement.
Capital improvement?
Yes.
Okay. I have no further questions, any?
And, Mr. President, that's why I was concerned about getting this done tonight, because it will take one year, from what I've understood right along, to, from the day we order a new truck. So, we're still going to have these two old ones for a year.
Yes, sir.
So, in my opinion, we need to move on this, money's been appropriated, we've talked about it, we need it, and we've got to take care of Rumford, Mr. President.
That's correct.
So, I'll make it formal and make that a motion to oppose.
Oh, let me ask, I mean, the councilwoman has stepped out for a little bit, and see if she would like to.
Thank you. No, I think, you know, I know that we've had issues with our ladder truck, and without going into too much, I know that there's some still issues going on in terms of ladder trucks currently in the city. So, I think it's important that we allocate the appropriate equipment for our city, for our residents. I think that a rescue is very important in Rumford, and I know the council has been supporting that for quite some time, so I'm hoping that that will take place. And then moving forward, and I know we're going to get into the budget, and we're going to look at all this stuff, I'm looking that we're making, and this goes for all departments across the board, we're making appropriate purchases in departments for the needs of the apartments, departments, so that we're not coming at a time like this where a fleet of equipment has now broken down and are inoperable and left the city stranded, and we're looking for other community entities to help us with our, our services. So, I'm in support of moving forward on this resolution.
Thank you. All right, so prematurely, we, Councilman Cahoon, I'm sorry.
A couple of questions, if you may. So, if I understand the resolution, the resolution, just to be clear, is for the purchase of a new rescue vehicle.
Yes, sir.
The first lease payment on the new ladder truck.
Correct.
And repairs for the used ladder truck.
That is correct, and, and some equipment that the ladders need.
May I ask a couple of questions about the proposed lease agreement?
Sure.
I understand that in our resolution, it indicates that our first payment would be Presumably, that's an annual payment in that amount, if that's the first lease payment we're making, that's, that's the annual payment?
Yes.
And we've chosen the five-year leasing option as opposed to the seven or ten?
That is correct.
Okay. What is the, what is the reason for the difference? The agreement that they, they show is a payment amount of $209,755 versus the $212 that we have in there. Is there a reason for that, or?
I'm going to turn the podium over to the Apparatus Chief, and he'll be able to answer that question.
Thank you.
Good evening, Battalion Chief David Ray, I'm in charge of Apparatus for the department. The difference being is that we have an updated quote as of today. The percentage rate has changed on the, on the lease, on lease contract, and that, it went from 3.6 percent possibly to that 2.9 percent that you see there, 2.89. So, the 212,000 annual payment came from a quote that we got in May, and now we got a quote as of today that that interest rate actually came down.
So, then the resolution would actually have to be corrected to read $209,755.43?
Yes.
Okay.
So, we can make an amendment on that? $209,743.
$755.43. May I ask one more question about that?
Sure.
What, what is included with, I imagine, you know, it being a lease agreement, there are requirements with regard to maintenance and mileage and that sort of thing. Do we have any idea about the, the terms? Can you talk to the terms a little bit?
So, it's, it's a lease to purchase, and it works a little differently than a, than a lease for an automobile. It's a one-year bump-to-bump of warranty covered by the manufacturer, and yes, we are expected to keep up with scheduled maintenance. So, the scheduled maintenance is on the city, as we would if we were purchasing the truck but making it in affordable payments.
And you don't have any concerns about the city's ability to, to make that scheduled maintenance or be able to fund that scheduled maintenance over, over time?
No.
Okay.
Very good, thank you, sir.
Go.
So, we, we do have to amend my.
You want to amend?
I, okay. I would amend the motion to include the revised figure of $209,755.43.
Okay, so we do have a motion on the floor at this point in time?
Second motion.
We have a second motion. Roll call, vote, please.
Councilman Cahoon.
I'd like to say aye, and I'd like to really thank the team for thinking about this and really thinking outside the box versus really, you know, kind of hand-jemming us into a situation where we had to purchase a brand-new truck. I think this is, you know, a good, if nothing else, a good experiment to see if, you know, this type of thing will work for the city.
Yes, very good.
Very much.
Roll call, vote, please.
Councilman Cahoon?
Aye.
Councilman Murado?
Aye.
Councilwoman Souza?
Aye.
Council Vice President Rodrick?
Aye.
And Council President Brito?
Aye. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. That was the, I believe that was the motion to amend that figure, now we have to pass the resolution as amended.
Make a motion. Move to pass the resolution as amended.
Second.
Roll call, vote.
Councilman Cahoon?
Aye.
Councilman Murado?
Aye.
Councilwoman Souza?
Aye.
Council Vice President Rodrick?
Aye.
Council President Brito?
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Next item, please.
Resolution authorizing the mayor to pay invoices for pre-construction expenses for the new East Providence High School, sponsored by Councilman Cahoon.
Okay, so, same drill as always, the amount changes, everything else remains the same. The amount is included in the resolution. It is $2,595,001.11. One second, I want to make sure we get the number right. That payment includes the services provided by the architect, AI Three, Gil Bane, the building manager, the program manager, the owner's program manager, and also one of our subs, if you will, performing geotechnical services on-site. I would like to point out that, you know, despite some recent claims to the contrary, this project is, always has been, and remains on budget at present, although we've accomplished a relatively small amount of the overall work that needs to be complete at present. We're running under budget, not a ton under budget, but under budget. And the building committee, your building committee, works very hard in conjunction with the building manager, or the construction manager, the architect, and the owner's program manager to make sure, month to month, we don't exceed the bonded amount.
Councilman, can you repeat that again for clarification, that the project is running on the budget at this point in time?
Budget, so I have the budget, most recently revised, one September of nineteen. This budget is provided to the council, I'm in the council, the building committee, in the same format every single month. Currently, total projected budget is $189,474,508. The approved budget cap being $189,500,000.
And I ask you that only because, just to clear the ear with people having the rumors out there that the school is currently over budget at this point in time, just so you all know, it is not over budget.
And behind schedule also, that's the other rumor.
Yes, so, I, and again, I mean, I can't, I mean, I hear it time and time again, and I don't know where it's coming from, who it's coming from, but I just want that clarification, and I'm glad you made that point this evening.
Neither is the building shrinking, or changing shape, or changing site, or changing functionality. It is exactly as presented, and, and there are going to be modifications, that's part of any project, that those modifications are all briefed out in open meetings, that anyone is welcome to attend, and attendance is pretty sparse.
Thank you.
Just to add to that, I think, to answer your question of where the confusion and maybe rumors, it was actually, I forget the gentleman's names, is it Sam, he's one of the project managers?
Sam Bradner is the owner's.
Sam Bradner, right, it was his own words who said, and he might have used the wrong words, he said, "We were down to nine million over," but he said, "That's routine." He said, "It was like a wish list." So, when you say that at a public meeting, that you're, you're over budget by nine million, but don't worry about it, because we can't go over budget, you know, he probably should word that diff- differently. And I watched the meeting, and I saw his quote exactly saying that, so, and then they said they were going to make some changes, as you said, like no lights, and artificial turf, and some of the fields. So, it caused some people to say that things changing, but as you've described well, and as others on that committee told me, these modifications that, that happen, and it could, could change again.
What, what, what the architect and that team is working to do is there are milestones in the project at which they must produce a revised cost estimate. One of those happened back in March, it was that schematic design, that was the point where we looked at the building after revisioning process, noticed, not noticed, but, you know, realized that the building was approximately $40 million over budget based on what was projected, and then we had to go through the entire exercise of bringing it again back within budget. Once that was complete, the next major step was the design, the detailed design, which just completed this summer, that was where you got the eight or nine million dollar number. There is one more major milestone with regard to the design, that's the production of the full contract, construction documents. That's the production of the full contract, construction documents that will take place later this fall. Once that is in place, that's essentially the building. That's essentially, you're looking at building, blueprints, mechanical, everything else, and the building manager is constructing to design. So the idea that the estimate fluctuates at those milestones is nothing new to, certainly not to this team, who's been doing this for decades.
And it's probably important for people to realize that no matter what, voters approve the bond issue for X amount of dollars, and it has to stay at X. It could go under, which it won't, but it can't go beyond what voters approve unless the city were to want to do that, and the public added to it or something. But if it's $189 million, and we know we're going to get reimbursed, so it's not $189, it's 50% less, and we hope more, but it can't go over $189, right?
It cannot, and neither can a responsible building committee allow them to deliver much less of a building for that $189.5. They must deliver what we projected them to deliver.
Thank you for that clarification.
Did we, did we vote? We did not.
We did not vote.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion on the floor for a second, and we have a second. Madam Clerk?
Councilman Cahoon?
Aye.
And Councilman Morado?
Aye.
Councilwoman Souza?
Aye.
Council Vice President Roderick?
Aye.
And Council President Brito?
Aye, thank you. Next item, please.
Let's see. The next one is Resolution Authorizing Duties and Time-Off Procedure for the City Clerk for the City of East Providence Sponsored by Council President Brito, Council Vice President Roderick, Councilman Cahoon, Councilman Morado, and Councilwoman Souza.
Okay, with this resolution here, we just wanted to essentially clear the airway and just let it, we let it stand as it always stood, that the city clerk does work for the city council. And with that being said, we had to put some parameters in place. So coming up with this resolution, we had a discussion. We came up with this resolution. It was good. It was cleared by everyone, and I can go on to read it just for the record, and I'll be real quick and brief about this. State of Rhode Island Plantations, City of East Providence, Resolution to Authorize Duties of Time-Off Procedure for the City Clerk for the City of East Providence, whereas the City Council of East Providence is sole appointed authority of the City Clerk pursuant to 2-12 of the East Providence Home Rule Charter, and whereas the City Clerk serves, shall serve under auspices of the City Council, and whereas the City Clerk serves as department head and supervisor for the municipal court, municipal court administrator and deputy clerk. And whereas the City Clerk oversees the probate court, including inspections and keeper of all records of the city, whereas the city oversees all boards, the City Clerk oversees all boards, commissions, ensuring records are properly filed with the Secretary of State, and serves as keeper of the city archives, and whereas in a matter of time off and work schedule, will be approved solely by the City Council with the time off slip submitted to the Director of Personnel for recording purposes only. Now, for, be it resolved that the City Council of East Providence authorize the City Clerk to fully exercise her privilege to serve as the City Council under definition given in Section 2-12 of the City of East Providence Charter and Revision Ordinance for the City of East Providence, Chapter 2, Article 4, Division 3, Section 2-211-225. The City Council authorize the City Council President to approve the discharge of any and all earned time for the City Clerk, including vacation compensation, sick, and other time. Once approved by the City Clerk, should submit said approving writing to the Director of Personnel, who shall record said time. This resolution shall take effect upon this passage this evening.
Make a motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion to approve. Anyone like to second that motion?
Second.
And we have a second. Roll call, vote please.
Councilman Cahoon?
Aye.
Councilman Morado?
Aye.
Councilwoman Souza?
Aye.
Council Vice President Roderick?
Aye.
And Council President Brito?
Aye. Next item, please.
The next is, wow, we're done. Mr. Chairman, we have executive session, that we're moving back and down.
No, we don't, no.
I just have one thing I'd like to add.
Please do.
I understand that Chief Almason has retired from the City of East Providence.
Yes.
That's what we were informed. I would like to congratulate Chief Almason on his retirement. I would like to thank him for his many, many fine years of service to the East Providence Fire Department, to the City of East Providence, to the men and women here. I mean, the leadership that he provided and the management and the oversight that he provided in that fire department quite literally saved and changed lives in our city, and that kind of service can't be at all overstated. So I wish him all the best of luck. I hope he has a long, happy, and healthy retirement, and I hope to see him kicking around here somewhere in the near future.
Well said, Councilman.
Mr. President, I'd like to thank you, Councilman Cahoon, for this opportunity. I'd like to also reiterate and say ditto to everything that Councilman Cahoon said. Chief Almason has kept up with the family tradition of supporting East Providence and Townes. His father, of course, was the beloved longtime principal of East Providence High School, and they both had that tough but fair approach. And when I was doing some security stuff with the schools, Chief Almason stepped right up to the plate and helped to make all of our schools safe as we worked with zero tolerance. And he did and offered a lot to the community. He is still a young man, so I wish him a happy and long retirement, and say thank you to him.
Thank you, Councilman.
I also wanted to mention, we do have another retiree in the city. Our acting planning director, Diane Feathering, also has retired from the city. She has also put in many, many years, dedicated her time in publications regarding her work as city planner. She has been instrumental in our community, especially in that waterfront district and the opportunity district and other areas throughout the city, making our city the beautiful place that people choose to come and do business and live. So I also want to wish Diane great success in her new ventures and best of luck, and thank you for all your support and help in our community.
Thank you, Councilwoman, and thank you for acknowledging Diane Feathering as well. Both of them, I had the pleasure of knowing both of them personally and professionally, and I really enjoyed, you know, either sitting in the office and talking to them and going over some concerns or issues or resolving some problems that were in the community. And it was just a great pleasure of having the opportunity to know them both personally and professionally. So I wish them both great health and a nice retirement. Thank you.
Mr. President, with that, no other accolades, I would move adjournment.
I'll second that.
Roll call, vote please.
Councilman Cahoon?
Let's retire from this meeting.
It's a close to getting to retirement. Councilman Cahoon?
Aye.
Councilman Morado?
Aye.
Councilwoman Souza?
Aye.
Council Vice President Roderick?
Aye.
And Council President Brito?
Aye.
You have a long way to go to retire, Congress.